Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager, Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your City Council.
Welcome to the October 24th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you with us here today and thank you for those watching online or live streaming from our website. We're so fortunate that you care enough to tune in. You're going to see a lot of good government this evening, so we're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to ask Pastor Dennis Lacy to come up, the pastor of North Highland Assembly of God Church. He's going to lead us in our invocation consistent with his faith tradition. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Take a moment. It occurred to me on the way over here, Honorable Mayor, that every time I've ever had the privilege of being here, I was usually asking for something. And can I just say to all of you, thank you. Thank you for your service on behalf of our congregation and about 2,000 people. I thank you for your service. You make this city an incredible place to live and raise a family. You put the "us" in Columbus, so thank you, thank you for all that you do, and I want to honor you this evening. Let us bow our hearts in prayer, shall we? Our Father who art in heaven, we pray that tonight we would recognize and receive guidance from the one, the only one, whose strength never wanes, whose authority never waivers, and who's never suffered defeat, and who is promised never to leave us or forsake us. I pray that you would help us anchor our hope in the promises of God and the promises that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. We pray that you would pour out your blessings on this incredible valley area and that your special grace, we pray, over Mayor Tomlinson and city councilors and all of their families. And we pray that you would just rebuke the devourer in our city and our individual lives and unlock the treasure house of heaven and give us the resources that we need to put wings on our dreams and may they quickly become a reality. Those of us as leaders and as these pace setters in our community, may we never wink at evil or violence or division, but may we always pursue justice and liberty and peace and unity. And finally, I pray, Lord, for wisdom. You said if we ask, you would give us wisdom from above, so help us think like you think and act like you act and succeed like you succeed. And may this prayer reach your throne tonight at lightning speed in the powerful name of the Prince of Peace, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Lacy, thank you so much. When I saw him here this evening, he said that his church had been praying for us, for our leadership, for the past 30 days, and I thought I felt a lessening of the burden of worry, and now I know why. So, thank you so very much. All right, we have some folks here. They're going to help us out with the Pledge of Allegiance. A few of them are veterans, so they know how to do this. I'm going to ask the A.J. McClung YMCA after-school program to come forward. And as they assemble, if you all would rise and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, including public who understands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, don't go away. We want you to state your name and how old you are.
My name is Emery Ryan, and I'm 12 years old.
My name's Olivia Bryant, and I'm seven years old.
My name is Kayla Green, and I'm nine years old.
My name is Amara. My name is Amara, and I'm eight years old.
My name is Carolyn Thomas, and I'm seven years old.
My name is Joshua Perry Phillips. I'm six years old.
Excellent. And we've got a leader here. Yes, sir, you want to say hello to everyone?
Good evening to everyone. My name is Chris Bryant. I'm the branch Executive Director for the John Peter YMCA and the A.J. McClung YMCA. Good evening.
Thank you. And I would be, I would be remiss if I didn't call out that Kayla Green is the niece of our city manager. And though he's not here, I know he's very proud of you and want to thank you all for coming. So let's give them another round of applause for coming here this evening and helping us out. Thank you all. Come back soon. All right, as you all know, we've been having regular updates from the Tax Assessor's Office to keep us apprised of the process related to the tax bills that have gone out, the appeals that have been filed, and how that review is going. So we're going to welcome John Williams to the podium to present a presentation on update and stand ready for questions from council. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy City Manager. Ladies and gentlemen of council, as you know, I'm John Williams, the Deputy Chief Appraiser, and I'm here to give you an update on the appeals. Standard first slide as of today. We have nine, I'm sorry, 9,298 active appeals as of 4:00 PM today when I ran the numbers. This represents 13.4% of those real property notices that went out. That's 2.85% of a value in dispute, and I don't believe I need to go into the definition of that anymore. Of those, 8,448 or just over 91% have been reviewed, so that leaves us with less than 10% remaining to be reviewed. That's a big milestone in our department. When we get down to a single digit as far as what's left, that's a good day, and that was today. 74% of those have been recommended for reduction, and so some of those have gone forward to our Board of Assessors, and the letters have gone out, and that's that next bullet point. 6,442 30-day letters have gone out, and that's a letter that informs the owner or the taxpayer that here's the reduction from your appeal. And then they have 30 days to respond to that letter. Once that letter, once that 30-day expires, that notice expires, and their right to appeal that second value, if you will, expires with it. So that's what those numbers represent. 5,322 or almost, actually 85% of the letters that have gone out will have expired officially by tomorrow. Let me just take a step back and explain that. They expired on the 20th of October, but we have to wait on the mail. And so we wait several days before we call them expired. I went ahead and took the liberty to put those numbers up there as of tomorrow. The 85% of those 30-day letters will have expired. Numbers, 1,797, 21% of the appeals are recommended for no change. Got really insignificant amount of 11 appeals that are going through our administrator for review. And then 131 remain for Division Manager review. That was up near 800 at one time. Those are reviews that I do, or Steve Wise is helping me with those as well, or some other Division Manager. And a new slide, I believe, Ms. Thomas, you asked for the next number, so this is just for you, not actually, it's for everyone. As of today, we certified 252 appeals to the Board of Equalization. So next week, we will take probably somewhere between 900 and 1,000 more cases to our board, and they'll approve that number. And then the following week, those will be certified to the BOE. So once we certify these appeals to the BOE, the Appeal Administrator and the Clerk's Office becomes responsible for those files. They do, they handle all the scheduling and all the interaction with the taxpayer at that point in time. The, we anticipate the BOEs beginning the first week in December, possibly the last week in November, but again, that is up to the Clerk's Spirit Court's Office. They handle all that from the time we certify those reports. So that's just our anticipation, as they begin first week December. And based on the numbers, right now, the Clerk's Office has told us that they can handle 150 appeals a week, so that's 600 every four weeks. That's going to push us into April, when you look at the total number of anticipated appeals going to the Board of Equalization. I can't give you exact dates on those because, again, we don't handle the scheduling of those appeals. We simply give it over to the Clerk's Office, and they handle the scheduling and everything from there on out. So that is my last slide, and as always, I'm available to questions.
Okay. John, you may want to come back. Next week, we're having a work session. I know you've got plenty to do, but since so many of those look like they may roll off, it seems like that would be a dramatic reduction in some of the numbers, a major milestone next week if it goes as you anticipate.
If it goes as I anticipate, we'll be through by Monday morning or this weekend. We'll be working to get that initial review of all the files complete and to our board. And there has been a request that I come next week.
Okay, good, good, good. All right, we have Counselor Davis.
Mr. Williams, thank you for your update. I've been traveling a little bit, so I might have missed one or two of your updates, but I do appreciate them. And this question may have already been asked, it was asked to me a couple of times, and I think I gave the right answer, but I'm just going to ask you to clarify it just for the sake of the viewing public. But I've had a lot of questions that circled around that sales tax rollback that's being listed on the notices that have been coming back to the citizens, and everybody wants to know what that is. I think, like I said, I think I gave a good answer, but would you take some time to, just to clarify that and describe it for us?
I'm interested in the answer you gave. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be flippant whatsoever. My first response would be that comes from the Tax Commissioner's Office. She's in charge of the billing and everything on that bill. And there's still some confusion as to what we do and what she does, not, of course, from y'all, but the people that may be listening. We assess the property. She submits that tax bill, calculates everything that's on that tax bill, to include what you're asking about, and then she or the Tax Commissioners Office receives those payments. So we're getting phone calls that, you know, crisscross those lines as far as who's responsibility and who exactly does what. But I wasn't trying to be joking. I am here as to how you answered that question because, and I may ask Betty to answer it for us. I've heard a few different variations of the answer.
Well, it's probably, you know, I had to think about it because at first it was kind of put on the spot, but yeah, you're right. You're right. I, you know, it's my understanding, a lot of people just don't know at this point.
Ms. Middleton, do you know about that particular statement on the bill?
I know.
And you may want to, oh, Pam, maybe Pam's the one. She might know.
Part of the requirement of the local option sales tax, both pennies, is that property taxes are rolled back by that amount. So when council adopts the millage rate ordinance, it shows the gross amount less the rollback, which gets to the net millage rate, which is what their actual bill is based on, but that's required on the tax notice, to show the rollback, which is equivalent to both pennies of the sales tax that's collected.
I think I gave them half of what you just said.
Okay.
That was going to be my question to you. Is that the answer you gave?
We've got a few more. Is that all, Counselor Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
For you? Okay. We've got Counselor Henderson. And there's a slight delay tonight, so just stay with us. Can you do it manually? It's freezing up again. Yikes.
There we go.
Here we go, there you go.
We're, John, thank you. I know you guys have been doing an amazing job, and I know at an earlier point in time, we talked about some of the challenges that doing a countywide assessment created, and some of those were that there were just three times the number of mailings and that there were liable to be some mislabeling of addresses or some one-offs. And we talked about accommodating them, and I don't really remember what we said other than that we were just going to deal with them on a one-on-one basis. So I got a call from a gentleman, for example, this afternoon. He had just missed by like three days, I think, the deadline for being able to appeal on a couple of properties, and he had an envelope that showed that it was addressed to his sons, who no longer lived at the house, and he had put it, as my dad does for me when he lives next door, he'll just put it in a bowl, and maybe within the next 30 days when I go by, I pick it up. And it was a tax bill for some of these properties. Instances like that, is the board prepared to make some accommodations if they come in within a reasonable amount of time?
I hate to speak for our board.
No, I understand, and I don't want to put you on the spot. I just know that we had this conversation earlier, and I can't really remember how it was resolved.
And you mentioned tax bill. Was it their notice of assessment or was it their actual tax bill?
You know, and I think this was his assessment. I think it was his assessment. So I apologize.
Which would have been the document that they would use to appeal. Those deadlines are set by law, as you would imagine.
I understand.
And anytime there's a request like this where somebody, something happened, and the taxpayer or property owner wants to see if there's any leniency or room, I just encourage them to come before our Board of Assessors and speak to them and get their input. That's not to encourage them and say they're going to waive that because they can't, but we are also, we try to be understanding about those types of things.
And again, I think it's, I mean, I don't know that it was misprinted. I just know what he represented to me, but it did seem that it falls underneath one of the areas that we were a little concerned about, and that is with such a mass reappraisal process going on and also a mass mailing, that certainly the opportunity for issues tripled.
Well, with the exception of the new parcels that came about for '17, we sent the same amount of notices out in '16 and in '15 because, and I can't recall the exact date, but in the last several years, the law changed to where everybody gets a notice of assessment, everybody.
That's right.
So.
Well, I just didn't know what to tell him because it seemed like if it was, if on our end somehow it was, it was misaddressed, that there should be some system to recapture some of that opportunity.
And that begins with the board.
I'll urge him to come to the board then.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We have Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Williams, thank you for the information that you have provided. I have just a couple of questions. The 9,200 appeals, I thought I remembered that we had over 10,000 appeals.
Yes, we did. And these are active appeals. So appeals that have not been resolved, appeals that have not expired. You know, when we send, you understand the difference now?
Yeah. And the other, the other question that I had, the 252 appeals, those appeals could have, there's a question mark at the end of this, those appeals could have been from either people who you denied their appeal altogether or you did not give them the assessment that they thought they should have. Is that correct?
Correct.
You using, you as the royal you, not you individually. So the 252 is really out of, out of the total that you have processed.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have, let's see here, Counselor Baker. Can you turn it on remotely? No, nobody can turn it on remotely.
This follows the Counselor Davis. And if I'm not mistaken, and Finance can correct me, on that rollback, I believe you take our sales tax collections for the two pennies, which would be in a year of 65 million, divided by the MNO, Maintenance, Operation Digest, which would be four and a half billion. That gives you the factor that you would take, you know, a value less any exemptions times the assessed value, times that factor would be that piece of the rollback or discount or reduction, whatever you want to call it. That's a calculation of our sales tax collections over the digest, which gives you the rollback millage piece. If somebody asks, how did you get to that number? Finance may have a better answer than that, but that's my understanding of it now.
Got it. Counselor Davis.
Well, they always say when you talk about things, you should get it in writing. So could somebody like just put that formula down in writing, maybe send it to all of us, and it's easy to put it on paper and let somebody see it. Thank you.
And it's interesting, too, because, you know, periodically, we've had citizens ask about rollbacks and insist we weren't doing rollbacks, and so we are doing rollbacks. And so it gives us that information. If somebody says something and becomes frustrated, we can actually give them the information that we are doing that, so. Yep, Pam.
I think there's maybe two definitions of rollback. We're required to do the sales tax rollback, but then there's also the rollback that we talk about during the public hearings.
Right.
That rolls the millage rate back to collect the same amount of dollars as you collected the prior year. So I think there's kind of two uses of that term rollback.
Right.
And so I'll send that out.
Yeah, do. I think that, again, that could be, the fact that there are those two uses could be some of the misunderstanding.
Absolutely.
I don't know, but it just is helpful for us to have that in case somebody asks us, then we know, so.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Hodges, I recall, too, when we passed the second local option sales tax, the OLOS, we did a rollback that was quite significant, and the rollback being what you would say because you're getting credit for paying the sales tax on your property tax. Is that generally correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so when we did in 2009, I think it was, or '10?
'10s. It would have been 2010s.
We did, we did a dramatic rollback, and you may recall that your escrow was different and all of those kinds of things. So this is a credit, if you will, for paying sales tax, a credit on your property tax.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's it, John, and I'm glad we'll see you next week, and it looks like there'll be some real progress made next week, perhaps.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Middleton. Appreciate your efforts. All right, and next we have, we'd like to ask those with St. Francis Stroke Program to come forward. Are you in the house, St. Francis? Yes, please. Dr. Valati and Ms. Thomas. Our Mayor Pro Tem's going to present a proclamation. As you all know, we have proclamation evening, which is the first Tuesday of the month, and this one missed it, but we didn't want to wait till the next one because this is the appropriate time. So every now and then, we'll make an exception, and we're going to have the Mayor Pro Tem read this proclamation into the record.
Good evening.
We also have CEO of St. Francis Hospital, Dan Jones, with us as well.
Oh, yes, hello. Welcome. Good to see you. We'll have you all introduce yourselves in just a moment, so.
Good evening. Whereas strokes are the second-leading cause of death in the world, the fifth-leading cause of death in the United States, and the fourth-leading cause of death in Georgia, and whereas worldwide, someone has a stroke every two seconds, and whereas each year roughly 800,000 people in the United States have a stroke, and 90% of strokes are linked to 10 avoidable risks, which includes high blood pressure, uncontrolled diabetes, high cholesterol, physical inactivity, and obesity, excessive alcohol intake, drug abuse, atrial fibrillation, smoking and tobacco abuse, catheter disease, and other types of blood disorders. And whereas the efforts of various organizations around our state, including the St. Francis Stroke Program, have made contributions to spreading community awareness through education, outreach, and screening programs by empowering the community with the lifesaving FAST, F-A-S-T, method of early detection, the importance of calling 911 and prevention of strokes with risk factor modification. And whereas through stroke prevention and community awareness, an opportunity exists to unite the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and the surrounding area in an effort to end stroke. Now therefore, Teresa Pike Thompson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, hereby proclaims, October 29, 2017, as World Stroke Day.
Please do say a few words. Introduce yourself. I know we've got a new CEO, and he's new to the community. We just want to say hello, but we'd like for each of you to introduce yourselves. If you'd like to say a few words, please do.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be with you. City Council reps, as a new member of your community, it's absolutely a pleasure and a privilege to be leading St. Francis. I want to introduce Dr. Valati, preeminent neurologist and leader of our stroke program. St. Francis has an incredible team and committed to taking care of the community of Columbus. It's just absolute pleasure to have Dr. Valati as part of our team. So I'll introduce Dr. Valati.
Thank you. My name's Njerjean Valati. I'm a neurologist and stroke specialist here in Columbus. I've been here in the community across both hospitals now for going on eight and a half years, so glad to be here and doing this for the second or third time with a proclamation with the city council. So glad to recognize that you guys as an organization, as a council, are recognizing today, and Alexis will talk a little bit about what happened in Atlanta today as well with the governor. And again, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to be before you as well as to spread the message of stroke awareness to our community and allowing us to participate in the care of the patients in our community, our loved ones, our family members. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alexis Thomas. I'm the neurology program coordinator at St. Francis. I've had the pleasure of working with Dr. Valati for about five years now, and this year, I am the chair of an organization called the Georgia Stroke Professional Alliance, and basically, that's where all of the hospitals across the state of Georgia have their coordinators join together as a group to help spread awareness and work together as a community to make a difference in stroke. So we had a proclamation with Governor Deal this morning as well, so we appreciate the council allowing us to come tonight and have it here in Columbus.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to spread the word to our citizens. The wellness of our citizens, of course, is very important, and so this gives us an opportunity. They can see this and be reminded of some of the symptoms and signs and know that they can always go to the internet and look up resource information. So thank you for giving us that opportunity. We have Counselor Huff would like to say a few words.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. Dr. Valati, I'd like for you to just walk over for the general public the signs and the timeframe, because they've told me that there's probably, what, three or four-hour window?
Absolutely. And thank you for asking that. I mean, I think this is a, anytime you get a platform and opportunity to spread awareness with more details, I think is great. So thanks for asking that question. A stroke is very time-sensitive. You have three to four and a half hours to receive an IV medication pushed into your veins for treatment for stroke. It's very, very time-sensitive. People who wake up with strokes oftentimes cannot be treated. So being aware and not sitting around and waiting for improvement is really important. So getting there fast, calling 911 is the key. But the signs and symptoms of stroke are sudden onset, that's the key, sudden onset of weakness of an arm or a leg, drooping of the face, slurred speech, difficulty seeing or pretty severe headache. All of those things can potentially be a sign of a stroke, and getting in is very important. And now we have advanced therapies where we can thread catheters into the brain and pull blood clots out. So there's a whole lot more we can do, but every minute that goes by, millions of brain cells are dying. So getting to the hospital fast and getting seen and evaluated by a neurologist, emergency room physician, and maybe even a neurosurgeon if it's a bleeding type of a stroke is very important. So being aware of those signs and symptoms, face, arms, speech weakness, or slurred speech are very, very important.
I appreciate you going over there because I've seen it on both sides. I've seen those that, we had a friend years ago that they called an ambulance for them, and they refused to go to the hospital, and it hit the next morning, and he had a lot of rehab to go through, but he never fully recovered.
Right.
And then we had a friend last year that arrived within the two-hour window, and everything was reversed, and they're living a normal life.
Absolutely, and that's the difference. That's the difference between walking home and walking out of the emergency room, going back back and resuming your life with no disability, or possibly ending up in a nursing home or even dead with severe disability. It's the number-one stroke, is the number-one cost to the healthcare system because of the disability, somewhere around $40 to $60 billion per year.
Yeah.
So pretty substantial burden on our healthcare system.
But thank you for all you do, and thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause, and please come around to accept the proclamation. You've got to shake hands. Sorry about that. Just start from the call. There you go. Thank you for all you do. Welcome again. Yes, good to see you.
You're welcome. It's our great city.
All right. We're going to do one more. We're going to bring up, actually, from the city attorney's agenda. And let me say, as we get to that, we actually have some folks here from Central Texas College out of Fort Benning that are here doing their government, I guess, fieldwork. And so if you all stand up and let us recognize you, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service to our country. If you're with Central Texas College, stand up. All right. Well, hopefully, we'll make it look as exciting as it actually is, so. All right. We're going to ask those folks with Spencer High School football team to come forward here. This is a resolution commending and congratulating Spencer High School football team for their first Heritage Bowl win in nearly two decades. And this was called for by Counselor Mimi Woodson, who represents this district. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm going to read the resolution. So as always, the names of the football players are listed, and I apologize in advance for the mispronunciations, but I'll do the best that I can. Whereas the football contest at A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium between G.W. Carver High School and Spencer High School has spanned five decades. Whereas some fans are reluctant to call the game a rivalry because some children went to Spencer and their parents graduated from Carver. Whereas the annual gathering is a chance to come together as friends and family and an opportunity for fellowship and tradition. Whereas some graduates who have moved away travel back to Columbus annually to support their high school at the matchup and reconnect with those that they haven't seen in a long time. Whereas the Spencer Green Waves prevailed 28 to 18 against the Carver Tigers for their first Heritage Bowl win in nearly two decades. Whereas the achievements of this Spencer High School football team are worthy of special recognition by this council. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby commend and congratulate the following members of the Spencer High School football team for their first Heritage Bowl win in nearly two decades. Fletcher Jordan, Seth Jordan, Carlton Williams, Amir Abrams, Terrell Gordon, Corey Scruggs, Devonte Webster, Franco Gates, John Nodderhill, Robert Murray, Amani Byrd, Riquito Leonard, or, excuse me, Leonard, DeJavas Nathan, Jahari Mons, Jakivius Moore, Devin Reed, Khalil Hollins, Corey Calhoun, Antonio Johnson, Rayquan Jackson, Kenvante Fanning, Zion Perrin, Antravius Hurd, Messiah Geddes, Gerald Taylor, Bryce Webster, Tamaraic Lawson, Jacoby Smith, Anthony McGruder, Trey Pickens, I think I already said Khalil, yeah, Khalil Hawkins, Devonte Brooks, Armani Johnson, John Brodnokx, Zach Faro, Artavan Edmund, Kareen Cobb, Jahari Mons, Judah Tucker, Glendon Miller, Treyquan Jackson, Jaques Chambers, Damon Smith, Devon Huray, Patrick Riley, Robert Cox, Emery Nugent, Jalen Bradley, Onajae Wheat, Toji?
Taj.
Taj Miles, Edwards Williams, Isaiah Soto, Sam Solely, Robert Whitaker, Kirdon Miller, Jacob Tyner, Jacory Brooks, Shamari Hemingway, Edward Williams, Zion Wallace, Eric Gibbs, William Brown, Jacob Tyner, Julian Battle, Caleb Drew, Jaleel Richardson, Adrian Hernandez, Hezekiah Moore, Corey Scott, Keith Johnson, Alex Jimenez, Dantrell Agus?
Agus.
Agus?
Agus.
Okay. Agus, Jacari Charles, let's see, Lakeith Johnson, excuse me, JM Sumri, and coaches, Pierre Coffey, Wesley Bynum, Eric Allen, Patrick Butler, Anthony Sanks, Marcus Carter, Christopher Perkins, Terrence Drake, Marvin Broadwater, Dominic Hartley, and Thomas Oglesby. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Spencer High School football team. And this has been introduced at a regular meeting of the Columbus Council held on the 24th day of October 2017. And would someone like to move for its adoption?
Yes.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please state aye. All right. And I think that next time, we may allow the coach to read the names. I mean, but anyway, yes, sir.
Well, on behalf of Spencer High School and Spencer Athletics, we're very humbled and appreciative of this recognition. Today, I brought two of the guys from the roster. This is Rayquan Jackson and also Judah Tucker. Our kids have worked extremely hard over the past three years at Spencer High School to change Spencer Athletics. And so we're extremely proud of them, and hopefully, you know, this is just the beginning of what we're doing.
Wonderful. General, would you like to say anything? You're all good. All right. We've got Counselor Huff.
Congratulations, both of you. And I'm one of the guys that you call the fiddle all the time. I'm only five, this brother's sister-in-law, that's Spencer, my niece, my cousin.
We come, like sitting in the press box, it's a neutral area for me. But congratulations. I know how hard you've worked. I know you and my brother talk a lot and everything. So congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Continue to do what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. And we have Counselor Woodson would like to say a few words. There you go.
Well, congratulations. I was very happy and honored to request this resolution. All four of my children went through Spencer High School, so I'm a Spencer mom. I was on Spencer's PTA and did a lot of things for Spencer. So it was such a great honor and excitement to see it. Matter of fact, when I heard, I called my son right away and said, you'll never believe it. We were all so excited. Thank you for all you do. I know that at Spencer's, the teachers and staff work very, very hard with their children. I know that they give them the needs that they need. I know that when I went through a tough time, ROTC instructor was there for my daughter through the good times and the bad times. And even today, you know, 10 years later, those teachers still keep in touch. And so wanted to say thank you and tell the principal of Spencer and everyone, thank you and keep up the good work. Don't never give up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Come around, let us shake your hand and present you this resolution. Let's give them another round of applause. Congratulations. Congratulations. Don't give the guys my name.
Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't even have any practice time.
I know. I'm sorry. But thank you. You were so sweet.
All right. We have the minutes from the October 10th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We've got a motion and a second for approval. Did anybody see any edits or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
No.
All right, any opposed? Okay, they're accepted, and we move into the city attorney's agenda this time. It's coming. Just thinking about it. There you go. It should be on. It shows on here. You know, we might need the handheld if it's going to lock up like this. If anybody knows where the handheld is? Do you have one tiny at your desk?
Yes.
Okay, Tasha. Okay, there it is on. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have one quick announcement. Counselor Garrett and many others are working on some amendments to the solid waste ordinance, property maintenance revisions. And John Hutchinson is going to come to the work session next week to get councils' input on some of this. Anything else? Counselor Garrett? All right. Okay, the first item up on our agenda, Mayor, is the rezoning. This is 3937 4003 Joyce Street. Counselor Allen, do we want to get a motion to continue this item, or is it?
Excuse me. Yeah. Okay, here we go. There you go.
Thank you. We spoke, is Ms. Fudge, okay, I thought that was you. I heard from the Homeowners Association of Maple Ridge, and I think everything's okay now, so we can.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll call this public hearing. The petitioner is here. This is to rezone this property from single-family residential one to single-family two. Proposed use is all single-family. It's recommended for approval. Is anybody in the audience that wants to be heard, one way or the other, on this item? Any questions?
She's the petitioner.
Counselor, have any questions? Anybody for the petitioner?
Let me just say for the record, I think Ms. Fudge sent the plans as filed with the planning department to the Homeowners Association, and that's the plans that they signed off on, so I think everything's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, the item can be voted on if there's no objection at the work.
It's a first reading.
At the work session.
Oh, at the work session.
Saying we can bring this back next week for a vote, if that's all right with everybody. All right. We will have it on a consent agenda next week. That'll be a nine o'clock meeting next Tuesday. They've got a work session scheduled, but they can also vote on this item. Here? Uh huh. Okay, thank you for being here. Next, we have a first-reading demolition ordinance, and we've got a slide presentation to run through quickly here. These properties. If anybody's present on any of these properties, please raise your hand. Let us know. These are slated by the building official to be demolished. First one is 3414 Fourth Avenue, Percy Tyndall owner. Next one is 600 A and B, 24th Street, Percy Tyndall owner. Then 3121 Morehouse Street, Danny Scott owner. 2508 Forsyth Street, Mary D. and Johnson Watt owners. 1029 Bedford Avenue, Felicia Soul and Dantrell Bradley owners. 1327 22nd Street, William Price owner. 2608 16th Avenue, Rosa Lee King owner. 3833 Marita Strive, Grady and Callie B. Conwell owners. And lastly, 4742 12th Avenue, Royal Priesthood Holiness Church owner. Anyone here from the church? Counselors, Mr. Hutchinson is here if you have any questions.
We have the mayor pro tem.
I have a question, but not about those properties, but about demolitions. We have a lot of properties that we've demolished, and they're on the tax roll with lien on it for the demolition costs. And we're not able to sell those properties because the demolition costs are so high. Have you thought about sitting down with Ms. Huff or somebody, so we can come up with a solution to get those properties back on the tax roll?
Yes, ma'am. I've talked with the city manager, and we're trying to find a process. Our thing is, is we just, those funds never come back. And so we have currently, right now, I think we probably have somewhere between at least $2 million in liens, whether it's grass, demolition, whatever, that's accumulated on these properties that we would never get back. So to just kind of waive them all, then there would be nowhere for us to be able to recoup them. But we have started to look at properties. If people are interested, that can be a possibility that we do waive.
Okay. Because if we can get them sold.
Yes, ma'am.
Even for half of what we got them on the books for, and they can build them, we've had more on the tax roll.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have Counselor Thomas.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, you and I have had a couple of conversations, and I've had some folks ask me about particular properties that look to us like they should be.
It came on.
It's on.
Yeah.
They should be demolished. You know, the one that you and I have talked about more than once. Would you go through what the process is? Why hadn't that house been on a list? Why hadn't that house been demolished? It's, you know, quite an eyesore for the community. It's right on one of the main streets going through that neighborhood, and they're tired of it.
This is the current list, well, just this map here shows all the demolitions we have. And we're somewhere between 300 and 400 properties that are on that demolition list. My concern comes down to funding. I can only tear down so many a year with the money that I'm allocated. I also work with Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and we do, if certain properties are less than 50 years old and don't have any historical relevance, I am able to use some of their funding in blight to be able to tear some properties down. But ideally, the cost of these properties, because we do do them properly, we vet them, they're done with, the lead is removed, asbestos is removed, so the cost of them do tend to be a little higher than somebody individually just coming in, getting a $50 permit, and just throwing everything in a Reeves dumpster. So, you know, some of those things, we can't really control. But if you, that total cost right there is $83,000, and my demolition budget is a little over $56,000. So in one swoop, I'm pretty much done for the year, you know. So just depending on what, and so we try to come up with different ways to try to go about these. But you see a lot of these properties here, the reason why we chose all these this time is because they have, they've been burned out. There's no ability to save these properties. They're structurally deficient. So most of these that we took, that we do take or bring to you, is they're beyond the point of repair. A lot of them, we try to catch now a lot earlier, and we started to board them, like the one we dealt with, with Counselor Woodson, the one on Portland Avenue. We went ahead and started boarding some of those up, so they won't degrade so much. And then instead of me having to spend $7,000, $8,000 to tear the whole property down, we're only spending like $1,000 to properly board it and keep it contained. So it's kind of a budget issue, just being able, this is, I kind of try to stretch it as much as I can with what we have, and these are the properties I'm able to bring to you to get approved.
And if someone would, wants to know if a particular property is on the demolition list, is that list published somewhere, or?
We're working on getting that public. Some of, we're kind of wrestling with that, because internally, we don't want to tell people, hey, these properties are abandoned, and then other things may happen to them. So we don't necessarily want to say, here. Now, if people are wanting to call. Now, if people are wanting to call in, we do have a demo hearing every month, and like I said, if people call in and are asking about specific properties, we will tell them, but we just, we're kind of a little protective of that information, because we don't want to harbor crime, or arsonists, or homeless, you know, kind of knowing, oh, well, these places are available, these are places I can stash things, or set fire to, and that kind of stuff. So, we're kind of trying to decide how much information we can let out and distribute.
And I know, too, that in our conversation, you've talked about the problems that we have when property changes hands. Would you talk about that, just to?
Yeah, this actually runs into one that I've talked with Counselor Bonds with earlier. We have one on Leary Court, and unfortunately, the person who used to live there previously has passed. And so, until their, we, no, we, until their deed is probated, I don't have a mechanism to go after that person. So, if I'm sending the enforcement, all the enforcement is unfortunately going to the address that is shown on the tax maps as the owner, which is possibly that person who's deceased. So, until the we, the deed has been, deed has been probated to show who's the next owner now, who's going to be the next person, it's just, I'm kind of stuck. Like, we tried to, we tried in that community, just any of those neighbors, if they can get ahold of us, if they can call us, and we can get a contact for a relative, but I can't officially cite that relative. Or even if the tax bills are being paid, until they're shown as the legal representative of that property, I can't go after them with citing them and things like that. So, it kind of puts us in a bind to try to get into compliance.
And when property changes hands, do you have to start the process over again?
Well, depends on the severity. Like, if it's something, we've had people on the demo list, and it was a property in pretty bad shape, and we kind of pushed it that immediately they needed to take something to do it. But ideally, it does start over, because we have to give that person also due process to notify them of the issues. A lot of times, most of the people don't buy it sight unseen, so they do know what the issues are, and if they do pull it up on a title search, they will see that we've put less pendings on it for demos, or whatever liens we've put on it. So, they will see that when they do the property search. So, a lot of times, they know what's going into it. So, we just have to deal with them on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Okay, that's.
If there are no other questions, we will bring that back also next week for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Next item, Mayor, is an ordinance amending chapter twenty of the Columbus Code to make some parking fines consistent throughout the code. The strike through should be on E cap for you to see, but what we're doing is substituting a new paragraph in twenty dash fourteen point six. The hundred dollar fine for blocking a fire hydrant remains the same, the others are all different parking violations, and they will be consistently forty dollars across the board Any questions on that? Okay, we'll bring it up for a vote next week. Then the last first reading is a housekeeping measure to amend section sixteen B dash fifteen to provide definition of an employee's family for sick leave shall be expanded to include employee's grandparents, grandchildren, or any person identified as a dependent on the most recent tax return. And that's come down from, on high, I think, at the federal government and the state level, too. Ms. Hollowell is here, if there are any questions. All right, we will vote on that next week. The, we have one more add-on resolution around the table, counselors, you should see, a resolution settling the claims of Victor and Miriam Diaz. This involved a motor vehicle accident involving the Diaz family, and the total settlement is seventy-five thousand dollars, ready for approval.
We've got a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this item? Okay, I'm going to try to take it to, is it on electronic vote? Okay, I'll call for oral vote then. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
All right. Thank you, that has passed, and those settlement papers will be executed. We do need a short executive session, Mayor, on real property disposal and litigation. Time permitting.
All right, thank you. All right, and we'll now move into our public agenda. And I'm sorry, things are moving just a little slowly this evening, but first, we have Mr. Christopher Reyes, who wants to talk to us about a city ordinance complaint. Mr. Reyes, if you would come forward. We're going to start the public agenda clock. If you'll just state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Christopher Reyes, seventy-two hundred Springbrook Drive, Columbus, Georgia, three
Yes, sir, you want to go ahead? You don't want to eat up your time with this?
Mayor, I want to state that the Rimwood section two subdivision that's adjacent to my property has an illegal sewer main involving my private property, currently leaking, and has seepage coming out, and Columbus Water Works refuses to test this seepage and take dirt tests and confirm that I'm in a safe or hazardous position. Today, may the record show that I'm issuing a demand letter requesting the city of council to get this sewer main in compliant status. I need to ask that Mayor Thomason, you being a member of the Columbus Board of Water Commissioners, that you please notify me tomorrow and let me know who will be handling the example, the sample testing to be taken from my property, and confirm whether or not it's hazardous or it's not hazardous. May the record show that each council member received a letter with my request of compliance to be brought to a legal status. I am asking the council members to provide me with answers to the noncompliant situation that has me documented on the city construction plans to be involved at Springbrook Crossing, Springbrook Block A. Currently, the plans that have been sold to me from Kevin White contain no professional engineer's approval. The sewer main is currently documented on the construction plans of city to have no elevation on my property. The ASBILT has been approved on twelve twenty-two twenty fifteen by all members involved documenting an illegal, noncompliant sewer main. Now, right now, I have a reason to believe that I'm in an unsafe and hazardous situation due to the fact that on ten nineteen, last week, Columbus Water Works came out and told me that they were going to take samples of the dirt in the sewer that's leaking, and get back to me with lab work. Well, I talked to a employee at Columbus Water Works today, and asked her, why has it been so long and nobody has contacted me with the lab work results? What, let's see, Watrice Black's here. Watrice Black's here, has been there seventeen years, stated to me that, Mr. Reyes, Columbus Water Works has no way of testing sewer, and has no sewer lab available to test your sewer. She says, I have not even received a work order to process testing on your property. So, for some reason, Mayor, Columbus Water Works is not taking me serious, and I'm involved in an evolving situation. There has been four residential developments allowed to transport sewer onto my private property. Until I bought the plans, I never knew I had a sewer main on my residence until I dug it up and located it. Now, that hole that I dug up to locate that sewer main, Mayor Thomason, fills up with water. And I told that to Columbus Water Works, I says, please come out here and tell me why this thing is leaking on my private property. The sewer riser that is on my property has sewer that's coming out the side and running down into the ground.
That is your warning, sir?
So, may I ask that on the next meeting, November the fourteenth, that council allow the letter that I'm requesting, and may the record show this is a letter of demand request, because in thirty-two months of my personal research, I have not had this resolved, and I have reason to believe that my private property, my personal residence, my health, the resale value of my private property is in jeopardy. Now, on the back of this page, you'll see the records that City of Columbus have recorded stating there is no private-public easement at seventy-two hundred Springbrook Drive. And I need, this letter will, is requesting everything I need from city council to put me in a compliant, safe, and non-hazardous situation. Are there any engineers here today from city engineering?
We do have city engineers.
May I speak with one?
After your comments are concluded, you still have a few minutes if you'd like to conclude your comments.
Okay. Mayor Thomason, I realize you guys have no idea what you're approving when you approve residential development. You're not aware that there's rock in the area, you're not aware that there's FEMA flood zones in the area, you're not aware that the sewer up under the ground is not You're not aware of how the water runs until the development is established and evolves to its final position. At that point, city council makes the decision to take the development over. I want city council to realize the things that I'm seriously concerned in before city council takes this development and calls it their own, because there's been four other developments upstream that have been allowed to transport sewer across my private property in a noncompliant sewer infrastructure documented by professional engineers, non proof of stamp, that Kevin White sold me these plans. He said, Mr. Plans, Mr. Reyes, these are the plans that show the sewer infrastructure on your property. All right, I get a P.E. engineer. Bill Smith himself, Mayor Thomason, with all due respect to council, again, I know you're not aware of the situation, Bill Smith himself stated, Mr. Reyes, your complaint is valid, this needs to be corrected, and this will be corrected on the ASBILT. Terry Slaughter, Moon and Meek states, Mr. Reyes, you are involved in a noncompliant sewer infrastructure that is evolving to a serious hazardous situation on your private property. Now, Mayor Thomason, ma'am, with all due respect, that's two professional engineers that have stated that I need something done about this sewer infrastructure. And I can't seem to get Donna Newman to call me, I can't get Kevin White to sit down with me, as you aware, Paul Ivy has been hired to handle my customer service complaints. I told Paul Ivy, Mr. Ivy, I have an emergency situation. Don't contact me in an emergency situation, Mr. Reyes, I can't help you. But Paul, Columbus Water Works tells me to contact you, you're telling me you can't help me. Columbus Water Works says they're going to get lab work, they don't even have a sewer labs, uh, department to test the samples. So, Mayor, I am a little frustrated, and I'm really scared, and I'm really worried about how my residence is going to be passed to my kids in a noncompliant situation. How this thing is going to evolve. I know Columbus Water Works wants to add more development on this line. Dave Erickson has bought another hundred acres, okay? Harris County wants to get on this line. This line cannot have, I'm requesting the council, Councilman Allen, again, thank you for your assistance, make the recommendation to put a stop order on any additional residential sewer to come onto my property until the sewer main has the right slope. Right now, the plans are documenting no slope within a four hundred and twelve-foot area. The width of this room here is fifty feet, eight times this distance from the next manhole on Rimwood Lock twenty-two to the manhole on my property to the west.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry to interrupt, we've given you your ten minutes, and we have, the city attorney would like to comment, but thank you for your comments. I know you've had, well, dozens of emails, and I know there's been visits to your property and meetings with staff and so forth. Yeah, well, we, we know we get copied on all the emails, but Clifton, would you like to respond?
Well, just briefly, again, we're going to advise Mr. Reyes to speak with an attorney. Mr. Ivy is the attorney for the Columbus Water Works, he has written Mr. Reyes and met with him on numerous occasions. Counselor Allen, our engineers, myself, we've all been out to the property. Ms. Newman and her staff, probably more than once, but whatever Ms. Newman can answer with respect to this letter, I know she will do, and on the water work side, I know Mr. Ivy will respond appropriately. But for the time being, there have been no test results provided to us, the city staff, by the water work, showing any kind of contamination with this property after numerous visits. So, that's all we can say now, Mr. Reyes, we advise you to consult with an attorney. You know.
So, you guys voted this to happen?
Reyes, Mr. Reyes, that concludes your comments, and what we'd like to do is, we've got this letter, and we will have someone respond to you in writing, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Let's see here, next, we have Mr., no, excuse me, we've got the senior vice commander Leroy Davis, representing Alabama American Legion. Good evening, and he's here to speak to us about Veterans Day banquet and parade. Good evening.
Good afternoon, councilmen, members, Mayor Thomason, Mayor Pro Temp, and all. My name is Leroy Davis, Jr., and I am retired from the world's greatest Navy, the United States Navy. As the admiral said, the Japanese admiral said, when they attacked Pearl Harbor, and they turned around and they left, and the other admiral said, well, let's go on to California. And the admiral responded, I think we have awakened a sleeping giant. So, I come before you today to let you know about the veterans banquet, which will be our second annual veterans banquet, which will be held November the tenth of twenty-seventeen at St. Luke Ministries. Also following that, that Saturday, will be a parade. As you know, Councilman Burns runs the parade. And after the parade, we'll have our first ever veterans rally, held right here for the Chattahoochee Valley. Now, I am the senior vice commander of the Department of Alabama for the American Legion, but I am also the director of the Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Council, uh, Veterans Organization, I'm sorry, the Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Organization, which comprised of nine different organizations on both sides of the river. And our focal point this year will be on educating our veterans, our veteran's families, their children, their church members, their community, about supporting those businesses who support veterans. Veterans are not getting the fair shake of support in anything we do. We invite you guys to our banquet and everything, and we get no response whatsoever. So, we just want to let you know that we will be having our veterans rally, we will be educating our veterans, their family and friends, on supporting those businesses which support us. And we're talking about both sides of the river. We're not talking about just Columbus or Phoenix City, we're talking about the Chattahoochee Valley. We are the ones who born the battle, and we want. We are the ones who born the battle, and we want someone to support us. We buy cars, we buy houses, we pay taxes, and we can't even get a one-hundred-dollar ad from some of the businesses in our community on both sides of the river to support just having a Veterans Banquet. And that's a shame, that's truly a shame. So, once again, I invite you all, my phone number is seven oh six, seven one eight, four four, four zero. I'm also on some of the committees, I'm on the Board of Trustees for C.O.C., Continuum of Care, to help eradicate homelessness for veterans in both Columbus and Muskogee and Russell County. So, we do a lot of work here in the community. So, we wanna invite you to talk with us, help us, and help us to help veterans, because that's what our organization do. And we also get a lot of scholarships for kids in the community to go to college. Thank you.
Commander, what time is the banquet?
The banquet is at seven o'clock on Friday, November the tenth, at St. Luke Ministries.
Okay, and Councilor Barnes?
Commander, I'd like for you to touch a little bit more on just some of the things. This whole, this community is a very dynamic community, insofar as there are a lot of veterans here. But also, there are a lot of veterans, especially the veterans who are returning now from multiple deployments. I'd like for you to speak about the work that we senior veterans are doing, but I'd like for you to touch on the Veterans Court, the Drug Court.
Yes.
And things of that nature, and the help that we give to the families of the veterans, because no veterans endure service on their own, they're supported by their spouse and their, and their children. Just touch on a little, he has the time, is that correct?
Why don't you ask a question, he has plenty.
Thank you. Touch on that, will you?
We are unique, being that we are two cities on each side of the river.
Exactly.
Muskogee County has a Veteran Court, which was established before Russell County Veterans Court. So, both sides have Veteran Courts, where we help veterans, especially those who are returning now from combat, and they have PTSD, TBI, traumatic brain injury. So, if, on my instance, on the Russell County side of the bridge, I am the Senior Mentor for Veterans Court. So, when a veteran go to jail, the jail tell them about us, and I'll go down and talk to them, either Ms. Margarita High, who's the Justice Outreach Social Worker, will go down and talk to them. She has the authority to go into their VA records, look at their records, see whether or not they are receiving treatment, and if they are, then we make a recommendation to the judge to accept them in Veterans Court. And upon being accepted into Veterans Court, by the time they get there, we tried to have them in a treatment program already. So, if we have them in a treatment program, the judge will accept their plea of guilty, and until they complete the treatment program, they will be, have a charge of guilty on them. Once they complete the treatment program, which takes normally around a year and a half to two years, then that charge is dismissed. But we will be, have gotten that veteran treatment. Other things that we do is we have what we call the Americanism Program that we run, which, as you know, from Phoenix City, we had a young man that win Boys Nation, Boys State, Boys Nation, is a program that the American Legion run in every state in the Union. And what that does, in the state of Georgia, for instance, the boys go to the University of Georgia in June, and they compete for running for governor, lieutenant governor, Secretary of State, sheriff, whatever office they, and they'll talk government and how government works. The winner of each state for governor and lieutenant governor goes to Washington, D.C. to Boys Nation. Upon completion of Boys Nation, they vote for a president of Boys Nation. In this case, this year, a boy from Central High School in Phoenix City won Boys Nation. We also run programs called All Rhetorical.
That's right.
All Rhetorical is a speech contest. And once they finish the speech contest, we had a young lady from Central, when in Alabama, won the speech contest. She went on to Indianapolis to represent us, and although she did not win, she did make it up to the finals. So, we run different programs, we run American Legion baseball, we run programs that's designed for kids only. We even have programs where if a parent can't pay their electric bill, and his, through no fault of their own, can't pay their rent, then they can put in for a grant from our national headquarters. And they can only apply for that grant if they have a child in the house under eighteen. So, the program is designed to take care of children, because we don't want children in a house without running water and heat. So, that's just a few, but these programs ran on both sides of the river. And both the American Legion, the Purple Heart, the D.A.V., VFW, we all work together, because as you all know, there's only three chartered veterans organizations in the country that was chartered by Congress. That's the American Legion, which is the world's largest wartime veteran organization, the D.A.V., and the VFW. Those are the only three that's chartered by Congress. Everything else are 501, but we are 501 and chartered.
Chartered.
So, we do a lot of things in the community, and we are the reason, the American Legion, why they have a guaranteed VA home loan, we are the reason the VA, we are the reason for education benefit. And by the way, I did not tell you, on the Veterans Rally, the VA will be out there.
Yes.
With tables set up to answer questions, to help with benefit for everybody on both sides of the river. So, that day will not be just a day for us to talk about not supporting our businesses, but that day will be a day also for veterans to get help that have not received help already. And every year, we hold a Female Veterans Stand Down in Phoenix City. And the reason we hold it is because a lot of our female veterans have not, don't realize that now the VA have come up to standards to taking care of females. Five years ago, the VA wasn't delivering babies, they wasn't looking at female health, they wasn't looking at sexual trauma for females experienced in the military. Now, they have everything that a regular hospital have to take care of all the female issues. So, we're doing great things, and we're continually trying to get the word out to those veterans who don't know about us, and how to get information on how we could help them get their benefits.
And I'm glad, and I wanted the commander to speak about that, because you notice he said, everything he spoke about was veterans taking, us, the veterans, taking care of veterans. But unfortunately, we can't, we need help to do all the things that we're doing. He covered the whole range of things, dealing with the individual military person, who oftentimes, unless you going through the military and going through some of the trauma, you have no way of knowing. But a lot of them are, need help, especially these new veterans. We are seeing a high percentage of these new veterans coming back. You know why? Because this is the first time in the history of this country, we've had multiple deployments where individuals go back. Normally, we would have a break-in service, but now we have multiple deployments where they come. That takes a toll on individuals, in a number of ways, it takes a toll on the individual's psyche, and it also affects the children. We have a lot of the children now that are going through a lot of trauma through separation anxiety. You heard that the commander talked about, we take care of those things. The reason that we're having this rally is because it is very difficult for us to be doing these things when we don't get the support, all the support of, as the commander mentioned, we didn't really get the support for the banquet. The proceeds from the banquet is used to help all these things that we're doing in the communities, for the families and for the children. And really, we've had to beg for funding when people should, and I wanted you to speak on all the things, so that people will realize what we're doing. We veterans are helping our fellow veterans. And I appreciate, Commander, you kicking off this banquet. The commander and I are doing the rally, what's the purpose of the rally? Well, you wanna know something? We want the veterans, let me stop, any veteran, the only thing, we don't ask for anything, whatever we did, we did for God and country. We have one veteran on this council, what did you do, for God and country, didn't ask for anything. And we, as veterans, we don't ask for anything. But we're taking care of our veterans, who, many of them have made a tremendous sacrifice. But we need the help of the community to do it.
If I may say one more thing, I am encouraging my counterparts over here in Columbus to start coming before the city council and testify. I go before Russell County Commission, and I go before Phoenix City, and I testify to let them know how much money we put into the community in one year, taking care of veterans, their family, and children. And I am encouraging the four American Legion posts that's over here, the D.A.V., the American Legion, to come before you and say, hey, this is what we did.
Right.
Now, if you take this away, how you gonna replace it? So, I am encouraging them to come before you, so you won't hear from me, somebody from the other side of the river, that you'll hear from the people over here. Because I can't do certain programs over here. Certain things I can do, but certain things, like when those veterans need grant money, it has to come through the judge's side.
Exactly.
But other things I may be able to help with, like doing claims and stuff of that nature. But when it comes in to putting in for the actual American Legion grant, I have to get with one of the Legion posts from over here in order to do that.
And so, we open up an invitation for the mayor, everyone up on this council, for the banquet, which is going to be held Friday.
November the tenth.
The tenth of November at seven P.M. at the St. Luke Ministry Center. We welcome you to come out to this, to this organization, to support the veterans on both sides of the river. Then, on the eleventh, everyone knows, is my Veterans Day Parade. Veterans Day Parade is open to everyone. As I said before, no veteran asks for anything, but in the Veterans Day Parade, the concept I initially had, and still have, is for the average veteran to get in their vehicle. It doesn't have to be fancy, I mean, my wife's truck. It's not the vehicle that, we want the veteran to get in there with family, children, grandchildren, great-grandsons in our case, and just drive through Phoenix City and Columbus and have the good people of this tri-city area wave and say, thank you for your service. Not that we look for that, I told you, we just get it for God and country, but it's good for the people to come out and say, thank you to the veterans for the service that they render.
And I wanna say this, we're having free hamburgers and hot dogs. And if we run out, blame it on me, that I did not raise enough or get enough people to donate and to help me put hot dogs, hamburgers, and water. We're not looking for sodas or anything like that. Just bottled water, hot dogs and hamburgers. So, if we run out, don't blame Pope, blame me.
No, 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 it's both of us. But, and we're gonna have, we hope to have some church group singing, but the most important thing is we're gonna have service officers from all the American Legions, disabled American veterans, veterans of foreign war, helping a lot of the veterans in our tri-city community who are having a difficult time getting the benefits they rightly deserve. So, we welcome everyone to come out to the Veterans Banquet, to participate in the Veterans Day Parade, and also for the veterans and family members come out for the Veterans Rally. And thank you, Commander, again.
And I promise you, you will enjoy it. Mayor Protem was at one, and she was an outstanding speaker, and I think she really enjoyed it. So, we thank you for that as well. And thank you for accepting me and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. All right. And next, we have Mr. Jackson Turner with Foundation Properties. Mr. Turner, I don't believe I see him here. All right, next, we have Mr. Frank G. Lumpkin the fourth, and he'd like to speak to us about Interstate fourteen. Good evening. Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am, Frank Lumpkin, thirty-two, twenty-five, Catherine Drive, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-oh-six. Well, thank you, Mayor, for having me, as well as the rest of the council, I'm so privileged to be with you here today. I want to share with you something I'm extremely passionate about, I'm gonna explain why. This is Interstate fourteen. Years ago, when the interstate system was established by President Eisenhower, there were plans for I-85 to come through Columbus. However, at this time, our city leaders decided interstate would not be positive for Columbus. As time has progressed, history has proven that cities not connected by the interstates tend to be isolated. Though Columbus has I-185, is just a spur, and we remain largely unconnected from the rest of the nation. I-14 is our second chance. Beginning, or completely built, it will begin in Meridian, Texas, and end in Augusta, Georgia. It is more than a concept, it does, in fact, exist. The first twenty-five mile stretch opened on this, on January twenty-sixth of this year, passing through Killing, Texas. More parts are being built right now in the Texas, Louisiana, and Mississippi corridors, however, little is being done in the eastern corridor, Georgia and Alabama. That is where we need to come in. A huge downside to the interstate system was, when it was initially developed, was the impact it had on pre-existing communities. However, in Columbus, we do not face this issue. Locally, Interstate fourteen would follow Highway eighty, the J.R. Allen Parkway, a road already built to interstate standards. Though some additions would have to be made on the eastern end of J.R. Allen, where limited access ends, most parts going through Columbus would not require the process of eminent domain to take place. We have options as far as areas that do need construction, and if we get started soon, we can make these additions before East Columbus becomes denser. Also, opponents to the interstate would argue that we would have increased traffic. However, due to J.R. Allen's unique design, it separates through traffic in the diagram labeled in red, and local traffic labeled in green, to prevent entanglement in several places. There's plenty of room to expand this addition to the rest of the interstate. Now, why should you care? I've gotten in a few reasons already, but really, there are three. Interstate connection, strategic military impact, and enhanced economic development. When watching a documentary on our interstate system, I came across a line, we are one nation, indivisible, united by roads. I felt like this truly captures the intensity to which the interstate system brings us as a country together. Geographically, Interstate fourteen would be a major artery connecting many areas of the southeast to one another. A nickname for I-14 is Forts to Ports, because of the significant number of bases, it would connect to other bases as well as seaports. Major cities in all states I-14 will run through are also connected to one another. All of these connections provide easier travel to these places for people and for freight. Another aspect to think about is the way in which Columbus is growing. We are a bigger city than we think, and we are only on the rise. We need to get ahead of the curve as far as, as far as infrastructure growth goes by installing solid roadways to sustain our growth. As Columbus grows eastward, we need to, a way for people to get in and out of the city. Interstate fourteen would provide this, much like the interstates that go into Atlanta and Houston and bring tons of people in on the daily. As commuter traffic volume increases, we will run into this problem, and we need to fix it now. We might as well connect the J.R. Allen Parkway with the Sam Wellborn Highway now, label it an interstate in order to solicit federal and state money and fix the issue before it gets worse. Also, Interstate fourteen would make Columbus a throughway city and even more of a destination city. What I mean by this is people who would not normally ever pass through Columbus, say, traveling to the coast or out west, will stop by Columbus for lunch in a hotel, and they will see our town. They will realize what a neat place it is and make it their future destination. Interstate fourteen would transform Interstate I-185 from a spur to a thriving highway. Fourteen would make I-85 a shortcut from fourteen to eighty-five and vice versa, transforming Columbus into a major crossroads. When the interstates were initially developed, their sole purpose was military connectivity. As stated previously, fourteen will be a major link connecting southeastern military installations with one another for ports and deployment. With impeding threats like war in the Middle East and in other regions like North Korea, the more connections, the better for rapid deployment opportunities. I-14 will enhance training. Men can be transported within hours from one major base to another for training at different facilities and in different environments. Another thing to keep in mind is the Chattahoochee Valley's single-largest employer, Fort Benning, the largest military base in the world, will benefit greatly by this connection. This is vital for their growth and for our growth. Because of the significant base connection, fourteen is guaranteed to have support from the Department of Defense, helping our case when requesting support. The gateway to economic prosperity is lined with concrete and asphalt. This map is from a study conducted by the University of Georgia, showing in red persistent poverty in the United States by county. Almost all of the areas fourteen travels through are depicted in red, showing that these areas are in great relief, or in need of relief from this poverty. Like the Fourteenth Amendment and its slavery, the interstate will provide means to an end for the many living in persistent poverty across the southeast. Interstates have been proven to bring economic prosperity to people living near them. Now, how will this interstate bring about this economic prosperity? The answer is better business. Practically any business you can think of will be positively affected by the interstate because of the increased volume of consumers and greater connectivity. Travel-related businesses, such as gas stations, hotels, and restaurants, are directly benefited by the increased number of people. Manufacturers are benefited because it is easier to ship their products to market. Warehousing and manufacturing firms are looking for places connected to the grid. The interstate will attract these sorts of businesses we are in shortage of in Columbus. The interstate, with the interstate, they will wanna locate in areas like the Columbus Technology Park. Businesses- Businesses already here like Pratt &amp; Whitney can expand their operations even further and reap the benefits of the interstate. Agricultural businesses will be able to get their produce to markets quicker, and the interstates will provide a means for migrant farm workers to travel from farm to farm. Lastly, the building and maintenance of I-14 will provide jobs to local construction companies in our city. The timing could not be better. Columbus is booming. There is so much energy right now in the interstate would only further energize everything that is already happening in Columbus. Also, one of the next things on President Trump's agenda is infrastructure spending, and unlike some of the current political issues, improvements of our infrastructure has by far to support. He has called for $500 billion to $1 trillion to be spent on infrastructure spending. If even a fraction of this money was spent towards 14, much could be accomplished. Also, three areas of the future I-14 route are high priority corridors. These are areas congressionally designated as needing improvements. One is even our very own Highway 80, right here in Columbus, meaning that when the money is designated to be spent on infrastructure, these areas are likely to be first. Columbus is the largest city along the route, meaning we need to set the precedent for the region in initiating the construction of this interstate. As the largest city along the route, we have the most to gain from anyone in the region. Leaders today and before have transformed our city. From the bidding to have Fort Benning put here, to the revitalization of downtown, to the vast expansion of CSU, we have a proven positive track record that we have the ability to come together and complete great feats. Though the interstate seems ambitious, if we all come together as we have before, we can make this a reality. Benefits are truly endless with the interstate. We have nothing to lose but so much to gain. In order to make I-14 a reality and transform our region, I ask you, our city council, to create a resolution advocating for the support of I-14 through Columbus and submit the resolution to the proper state and federal government officials. Push for the reservation of land on the east end of Highway 80, J.R. Allen Parkway, to reduce future costs and potential opposition to the interstate. Ask the Chamber of Commerce to be the point of contact for communication with other government entities, cities, towns, and counties along the route, and this is because they already have established Transportation Committee working on projects like this. Now, all of this may seem like a major feat, but what I say is if Killing, Texas, a town much smaller than Columbus, can build a 25-mile stretch of interstate, so can we. It's not a competition, but seriously, we can do better. We can accomplish this by simply connecting the J.R. Allen Parkway with the Sam Wellborn Highway in Columbus. We need to do what we can do to make I-14 a reality for the future of this great city. Thank you, Council, for your time.
Very much. And we've got several councilors that would like to speak. We have Walker Garrett.
Frank, I never cease to be amazed by you, and this was a fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
I think it's got a lot of tie-ins. I think Dr. Wright may have some interest in this presentation, too. And I'll be happy to be a sponsor for your resolution that you propose. I think it's a great idea, and it's something that I think, you know, I've thought that growing up. I thought that when I ran for council, what could have happened if the interstate had run through Columbus? And we now have that opportunity. We've got a second chance. And I'm glad you brought that to us. It was a very impressive presentation. I commend you for it.
Well, thank you so much, Counselor Garrett.
All right. We have Counselor Woodson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lumpkin. That's very impressive. I was just sitting here with Gary asking, who's this young man? Wow, it was very impressive, very informative. I wanted to ask you a couple questions.
Please, please.
Have you met with our engineering and planning department and Fort Benning yet?
I have not met with Fort Benning. I've spoken with Rick Jones concerning the matter, but I have not had an official meeting with the Planning Commission. No, ma'am.
Okay. I would suggest, a resolution is a wonderful thing, but it's more impressive when you have the buy-in of everyone, where you have lots of people behind you and supporting you. I think it's an awesome idea. I tend to agree. Before my colleague asked for the resolution, I had wrote it down here, let's ask for a resolution. But before we did that, I think it would be impressive if you meet with our planning division and with our engineers and Fort Benning, because they are plans. You know, there's the 2030 plan, there's Columbus 2025. We're getting ready to look at some expansion, possibly building things off of South Lumpkin Road. There's so much going on that I think it will be perfect, but it would be good if it's not standing by itself, that is part of this development for the future for Columbus. And we're always wanting young professionals like yourself to come forward, because one day, we will not be here, and the future is yours, and the city is yours. So I would like to encourage you. The resolution is great, and I'm gonna, you know, support it also, but I think it'll be more important for you if you met with them, and then if you met with Fort Benning, you met with our delegation, our congressman, these individuals that can plant a little seed or water the seed that you planted to make sure that it becomes successful. But I wanted to tell you that, don't lose hope or faith if someone closes the door because another door will open for you. And sometimes door closes to see how really interested you really are in your project. Okay? So I want you to keep that in, in mind. Unlike my colleagues, I'm very interested, and I think you're doing well.
Well, thank you so much, Counselor Woodson, and I will definitely take note of meeting with Fort Benning as well as some of our other leaders, like the Planning Commission. I will say, a lot of studies have actually been done on 14 already, and before the recession in 2006, a lot was being done. Congressman Zell B. Miller was in support of I-14, as well as, I think, State Senator John Barrow of Northern Georgia. I'm not exactly sure what happened, but I know there had been studies done on 14 through Georgia before, but, you know, when the recession hit, nothing really happened in our region. And so I know there are studies out there on 14, but that's what, you know, I want to take this to the state and federal level in order to, you know, get more progress done on it. And I wanted to come to you guys first, and so y'all could lead me to those people. So, thank you.
And that's my reason behind that, because you want to build, you want to build that team that you need to make it. Because lots of times, I've learned in my years here, sometimes you can bring something up and no one really supports it, or doesn't look at it, or it sits on a shelf. It's all about timing. It's all about timing, and it's all about who you have at the table. And Columbus is a, is a community that if you can sell it, they buy it. It's made, it's completed. So that's why I'm really encouraging you to stay positive, get with our engineers, get with our planning division, these groups that are out there planning things so that you can be a part of it, so that can help you to make this a reality. I could tell you that I would jump on your wagon, because I think it's a good idea. I just want you to, you know, not to give up and keep pushing and shake it off the shelves, the dust, and let's move forward.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It feels weird, too.
Yeah. And Frank, I wanted to say that we had a PCC meeting today, which is the head of our transportation system in our metropolitan area in this Columbus region. And I asked the Georgia DOT rep about your appearance here tonight, so he may be watching via live stream. But he said, as you've noted, that the Federal Highway Administration was leading this effort. And we do have a Federal Highway Administration representative here in Columbus, Anne Marie Turner. And so we can, I think, get you with her to get an update. And it was sort of put on the back burner, no funding source was ever found, but all of that work, as you said, is there. I think there's probably additional work that needs to be done. And I asked him about your request for a resolution, and he said, it never hurts for the local community to be talking and asking about these things. That's how the projects rise to the top. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I know, of course, you know Rick Jones with our Citizens Advisory Committee and who heads up our transportation planning. And so maybe you can get with him and Anne Marie Turner, and we can perhaps get a report maybe even at our work session that's coming up next week.
So, let's see. With that, we have Counselor Huff.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Love your idea. I heard part of it, I think, one night at Country's that we were talking. My son, Bruce Junior, ran into you somewhere before he left going to school. I can't remember where you all were.
Columbus Airport.
Okay. And he said you all had a nice conversation concerning I-14, and he wishes you well. I spoke with him a couple of days ago to let him know you were coming. And he says, stick to it. He said you have more in you about going into the political world than he does, but he said he supports you.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your son as well as your support.
Thank you, thank you. I see Mom and Daddy's here, supporting you. But I'm behind your idea. I was one of those folks coming up a long time ago that was just missed opportunity to have an interstate come through here. And as I travel, you see the results of the cities that didn't get on board as you sometimes get off the highway due to accidents and things and trying to find a shortcut to cut through, and you see how many people missed the opportunity and the amount of money that's flowing on and off the interstate of those cities. So stick to your guns. You have my support. I'm with Walker and me, me and everybody here, Counselor Woodson, Counselor Garrett, and all of us, and I'm sure you'll pick up more support as time goes on, but do follow, you know, all of the suggestions and things and build your team, because we normally try to work together here and agree on things the majority of the time to try to push it on to the state and federal government.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. And I mean, Interstate 14 is something that the community will need to all support and come together, and it's really something that can make, transform Columbus and only just add to everything that is happening here already that's so great. So...
Thank you.
All right. We have Counselor Thomas.
Hi, Frank. I will tell you that as I was listening to your presentation, I noticed that Peter Bowden is in the audience saying, with Columbus, not Georgia. And when you said what you did about travel-related businesses, he sort of perked up. So this is, this is one of those things I think that many areas in our community will benefit from. I think perhaps the ordinance, I mean, the resolution that we were talking about, may be the first of several resolutions as you move this process along. And I know that you have made some contact with the Chamber of Commerce, and that was one of the things that you said in here was for us to work with the Chamber. You want to tell us a little bit about their reaction to what you have here?
Yes, ma'am. So back in, in about mid-May of this year, I was able to brief the Chamber of Commerce, much like the presentation I gave tonight, and they said that they would put it on their, their Transportation Committee's agenda. And I spoke to the Chamber, and I think, you know, that like, since they already have this established committee, it would, you know, be a lot more resourceful to use their committee as, instead of setting up our, the city council setting up their own committee, since, you know, we have limited resources, we might as well use the ones that are already there. As well as they are, they have, you know, contacts with other chambers along the route in order to make 14 a reality and get other municipalities on board. So that's why I threw that in the resolution.
And, and I think one of the things, too, that Mr. Jones, Rick Jones, from our Planning Department can help with is to put you in contact with people that you need to talk with. He knows a lot of folks around the area who deal in this sort of thing and will be, I think, probably a great resource to you to, to make those contacts that you need to make. And I can't stop this without saying, go Dawgs.
That's right. Go Dawgs. And I will add that I actually have spoken with the Georgia State Transportation Committee as well, not as a whole, but I spoke to Representative Sam Wellborn for, for the committee, and I hope to be making a presentation to them in Atlanta similar to this sometime in the next few months. So I have been working at all different levels and with many different people on this project, so...
All right. We have Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodman is sitting in for Mr. Isaiah Hughley.
Good evening. I just can't let this evening go by without letting you know that Frank is a recent graduate of the Youth Advisory Council. And so, yes, very excited about that. You did an outstanding job, as you have always done, even on the council and showing leadership. And so we're so very proud of you, Frank. Very proud of you.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate, you know, the Youth Advisory Council and what they do, and I appreciate the city leaders that work with them and make it a reality, because it was definitely a, you know, major influence in getting me up here, giving me the courage to do something like this, you know, present to city council. So, yes, with that being said, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Woodson.
Yes. Peter? I would suggest if you would write a little letter in support besides our resolution coming from the Convention and Business Bureau, based on the information that you said, more tourism, more people in beds and restaurants. So if I were you, I would go get his card and go visit him and see what he does and see what you can add to your presentation so that when you meet with others, you would touch those little eagles or those little points so that you can continue to get the support that you need. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have, excuse me, Dr. Robert Wright. He's requesting the council's support for gaming legislation. Dr. Wright, good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to Member of Council. Like time flies, okay, I was down here last year. I don't know what happened to time, but anyway, I'm here to speak and support really of Item Five on the City Manager's Agenda. I really didn't come to make a speech. I think we did that last time. But basically, all we request is that you pass the same resolution that you passed last year, requesting our legislative delegation to support a referendum, a state referendum that would allow our citizens of Georgia to vote as whether or not they would like gaming in the state of Georgia. If Columbus is one of the cities that, that would be designated as a possible venue, then our local citizens also have the right to vote yea or nay on a similar resolution. So that's, I'm just here to support the City Managers' Item Number Five on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Wright, we appreciate that, and we're going to get to that next, and there may be questions, but I think folks know a good deal about it with information shared already. Counselor Huff?
I'm good. We'll be moving that way.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you again. I'm sorry, what's that? Let's see. Counselor Huff? It's coming up next on the city. This, this concludes the public agenda. We're moving right into the City Manager's Agenda. We have a short purchase agenda, and then, and then we go into the legislative agenda.
Okay. I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. And so that does conclude public agenda, and Ms. Goodman, we will turn it over to you. If you want to start with a handheld, I'll keep working this mic.
Okay. Sounds good. Good evening again. Item one on the City Manager's Agenda is requesting a speed study by the Georgia Department of Transportation for I Interstate I-185 from J.R. Allen, US 80 South to Victory Drive, just to determine if the current speed of 65 needs to be decreased, you know, at some level. Back in 2010, it was increased from 55 miles per hour to 65 miles per hour. But because of many of the collisions that happened in that area, they are now looking to do a speed study to determine what level of reduction is needed.
Okay, we have a motion in second for approval. We have a question from Counselor Huff.
After the study is completed, is 60 miles an hour, is that still in the concept if they come up with that?
They will do this, they will do the study and determine what the appropriate speed would be. It may be lower. It may be 60, or it may be 65, depending on the results.
We had parts coming in that were 65, and it went to 70, and it went back, I guess. and it went back, I guess. And then, uh, some of the officers told me that, you know, 70 seemed to be a little bit quick coming through town. A lot more accidents and everything.
It's 70 north of Double Churches Road.
Okay. But I was just saying the, the, I hope the study reveals that the 55 is extremely slow trying to move traffic from J.R. Allen Parkway to Victory Drive. But if 65 is too quick, I hope it comes up with maybe 60 so that we can get people through.
I understand. But there are also some safety concerns with the number of exits that are on 185 and then how they back up sometime. It will help when we get some of these improvements at, at some of these interchanges made.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's see, we've got Counselor Thomas.
Uh, Ms. Newman, um, one of the questions that I had is, is who, who requested this, that we do this study? Did this come from the Police Department or G.O., GDOT, or who? How did, how did this come about?
I was asked by Counselor Baker to, uh, consider it. And then, um, I spoke with somebody from GDOT to see what it would take. And they said they would, they would have to have concurrence, um, from the City Council, since the City Council was the one that requested it be increased in 2010.
And so after this study, then, then what? I mean, do they, would they just go ahead and change it, or would it come back to us?
No, ma'am, it'll have to come back. It'll have to come back and be revised in our ordinance.
Our ordinance controls the, um, speed on...
It ha, it doesn't necessarily control the speed, but it, it controls our enforcement. They, they have the authority to set the appropriate speed. When, even when we do a speed study, which we're doing out on Double Churches Road right now, I have to submit that to GDOT to be approved. They have oversight to make sure you're not artificially setting speeds in the community. But then it has to be adopted into the ordinance by the city in order to be enforced.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we've got, um, Deputy City Manager Goodman.
I just want to make sure that Counselor Thomas's question was answered. I don't know if she, uh, were you...
I guess so.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's see here, we have, um, Counselor Baker.
Counselor Thomas, I had been meeting with residents in the area because that cuts right through the heart of my district, all the way from Airport through way to Macon Road. And that's just, it just doesn't, the speeds there just don't work. And so, the, the residents came to me, but they had already been to the G.O., uh, to the DOT because they knew some of the people up there. And the DOT said they, they were already aware of the issue because they've been tracking the stats. And they were going to get with Ms. Newman, but they did like a resolution from the council to support them to go in and review again. So, that's how I got into the picture, was meeting with the people and out there in the area.
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, are you up again, um, Ms.?
Okay.
Yes. Did you want to add something? We have several in line. Uh, we have Counselor Davis. I didn't know if you wanted to add something. I saw the light going.
No.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, I think Counselor Baker just kind of touched on, and I was gonna ask, I think if I, I read the agenda report, it talks a little bit more about the traffic study as an effort to look into reducing the speed in that area. And I think, uh, if I'm understanding this right, we're talking about the area between Manchester and Macon Road where there's been a tremendous amount of accidents.
I think it's J.R.
So, I'm not sure...
We're requesting they review the whole corridor.
Well, I understand that, but the, the part about the large number of accidents seem to happen in that corridor that I just talked about between those two major throughways, between Manchester and Macon Road. Everybody knows that. And a large number of wrecks in that area, a large number of accidents.
That is true, but we also have some at Bune Vista Road, um, as well as St. Mary's Road.
Okay. Well, my concern is even though, I mean, that may help, uh, and, you know, it's probably going to be a recommendation, but I don't know if that's the only fix in that area. That is a really bad section of Holly right there. There's no way around it.
It, it's not, that's just one of the things that they're looking at. They're also looking at the, um, paving conditions there to see if they need to redo asphalt drainage systems, um, signal improvements. They're looking at it, at it comprehensively. But this is just one of the things because of the, the speed of traffic coming through there and, and the congestion and all these other issues.
And that's really my point. I know that the, the slowing the traffic down may be a step in the right direction, but really, you're not going to make any progress until you do what you just said. There needs to be some tremendous amount of traffic improvements there. And I'm, I don't have the answer, but, uh, I, I think it's a little more than just speeding in there, especially when it rains. Uh, everybody knows that that's a, a dangerous section.
We've been in communication with them about that.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have, uh, Counselor Huff.
Yeah, on the part coming off the Manchester Expressway going south on 185, it goes downhill there. Uh, ask them, uh, you all, whoever checks that, there's an area there where the water builds up. They've been complaining for years. They hit and then just hydroplane. There is any way to cut that or redo the road where the water doesn't just sit when it rains, that it runs off somewhere. Yeah. And then you were saying that when the study is completed, GDOT determines what the speed should be.
The appropriate speed.
Okay. And then it has to be adopted by us?
We'll have to adopt that speed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And, uh, let's see, where were we? I think we had a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, so we're set to go. Uh, that concludes our discussion. I'm going to try to set this up for our first electronic vote. Let's see what happens. And it looks like it's ready to go. Counselor Allen, see? Okay. All right. And it passes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, that probably the only one we can use on electronic because of the system being slow.
Okay, what now?
That might be the only item we can use for electronic voting due to the system being slow.
We won't use it for purchases.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead. Um, Deputy City Manager.
Item two are the purchases. Uh, item A, we have a declaration of surplus and donated, donation of mattresses to eight nonprofit organizations by Fire EMS.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval of the declaration of surplus and donation of mattresses. Uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please state aye.
Item B is various types of patches and emblems and annual contract.
We've got a motion and second to approve items B through F, which includes various types of patches and emblems. It's an annual contract. C, uh, item C is ball field soil conditioner. It's an annual contract. D is paint, interior and exterior and accessories. E is repair of 2009 Peterbilt dump truck. And F is Contract Amendment Three for Public Transit Needs Assessment. Um, is there any discussion on any of these items, B through F? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay.
Okay, we reach, proceed. Uh, next we have the, uh, our 2018 proposed legislative agenda. Uh, we are asking your approval of legislative agenda that will be shared with our delegation at the Hometown Connection and to provide them with this information for the 2018 session when they convene in January. There are eight items, uh, five new items, three carryover items. Uh, but of course, uh, from now up until January and even, uh, in the midst of the legislative session, you will be able to make any additions to that, uh, legislative agenda if you want to add anything to it. Also, from the 2017 list, you can pull any of those things that you like if you want to add to this proposed, uh, 2018 agenda. Item number one, and what I'll do is let you know who requested the item and whether or not it was a carryover item from 2017. And the first that we have item is a restriction on municipal power. Uh, and this is a request of the City Manager in support of GMA's legislative agenda for Georgia cities. Uh, it just simply says that CCG, CCG joins the Georgia Municipal Association in strongly opposing any legislation that restricts the authority of municipalities to respond to and meet the needs of their citizens. Uh, in, as a way of explanation, GMA, uh, of course, in conjunction with CCG are concerned with, uh, the continued erosion of home rule and any restrictions on the ability of municipalities to enact ordinances and enforce regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of municipal residents. And just as an example, if you recall, when Counselor Davis, uh, put on the 2017 agenda, the, uh, personal, uh, transportation vehicles, uh, the state law required that you renew the license every five years. But I believe, uh, Counselor Davis, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you want the ability to renew it more often, more frequently. And that is again, the home rule, uh, whether or not we want to have that, um, uh, that opportunity to do it or the state. So, that's the home rule. That's what we're asking and looking for an approval on that to be placed on the legislative agenda.
Are we going to, uh, vote on each one separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So that, is there, um, okay, there's a motion and second then to adopt that, uh, item on our legislative agenda. Is there any discussion related to this item? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, that one passes.
Okay. Item two is the management of public rights of way. This is a request, again, by, by our City Manager in support of the Georgia Municipal Association's legislative agenda for Georgia cities. And here, the use of municipal rights of way by any private company or individual without appropriate compensation is considered a gratuity. And so the CCG joins the Georgia Municipal Association in opposing any legislation that would weaken the authority of Georgia's municipalities to regulate the use of their public rights of way and which weakens the authority to locally determine appropriate compensation for such use. And by way of explanation, uh, the municipalities currently have the authority to regulate the use of public rights of way, uh, and contract with utility providers and such for their use. And any changes to this public rights of way could hinder economic growth for municipalities and could jeopardize public safety.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
Okay. Item three is a one payer payment credit. Uh, this is a request of Counselor Gary Allen and Judge Bobby Peters. And it is requesting legislation that would require utility companies to accept one payer payment credit. Currently, cities are billed by utility companies per meter at each location owned by the city or the county, which sounds simple and fair. But when paying the bill, the city or the county should get credit, uh, for total consumption each month of all meters instead of consumption at many different rates. And again, by way of explanation, a one payment system for total usage of all city-county locations would drastically reduce the amount paid per unit. Utility companies are opposed to a one payer billing and will not accept it without general statewide legislation. This would save the city and the county millions of dollars over time.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, we've got the mayor pro temp.
We probably won't see this in my lifetime, but it's a good, something to work on.
All right. Okay, uh, with that, all those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Item four is to authorize the imposition and collection of law library fees in magistrate court of Muskogee County. This is a request of Judge Gil McBride, the Chief Judge of Superior Court. Currently, the Board of Trustees, uh, of the law library, they're requesting legislation that would authorize the Chief Judge of the magistrate court.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
And item five is the casino gaming referendum, which is a carryover from 2017.
Got a motion and second for approval. We do have discussion. Uh, Counselor Thomas.
Um, I would, uh, ask my fellow councillors to, let's be real, um, careful about approving uh, this, um, request. Um, the bill that made the furthest progress in the legislature last year, um, was House Bill 159. And under that bill, um, Columbus would not have, um, qualified to have a casino. Uh, it, that bill allowed two casinos in the state, one to be in a county, uh, of 900,000 population, which means the counties around Atlanta would be the only ones that would meet that. And the second one could be in a county, uh, with 250,000 population. And the only county outside of the Atlanta area that meets that is Chatham. So, the only, if that bill were to pass, the only places that we could have casinos in Georgia would be in the Atlanta area and in Savannah. Columbus would not be eligible for that. The impact that that has on Columbus, um, is financial. Um, for example, many times casinos have, in addition to their gaming, um, they have entertainment venues where they bring in, um, artists to, uh, to do programs of, of sorts. It is typical in all of those contracts that those, um, those entertainment venues have with those artists that would say, for example, this artist agrees that for the next year, he or she will not do another show within 250 miles of this venue. So, even though the, the casino is in Atlanta, if an artist signed a contract with Atlanta that had that clause in it, they couldn't come to Columbus for at least a year. And that could have a, uh, impact on our, um, on our economic picture. There are a lot of those kinds of things that, it's not just whether or not you want to have gambling in your community. It's the fallout from that throughout the rest of the, of the state. I understand the, um, move to, uh, provide Hope scholarships to college-bound students. Um, quite frankly, I think that was, um, added purely to, um, make it go down a little easier, if you will. Um, that, but the main purpose in, um, that legislation is to, um, allow a casino in Atlanta and to allow one in Savannah. And so, I, I, um, may be, uh, the lone voice crying in the wilderness here, uh, but I've been there before. And, uh, I'm going to oppose this, um, request because I do not think that it will be, um, good for Columbus in any, um, in, in any of its manifestations. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, we've got Counselor Baker.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm looking at one of our, in this item, we have a request for a local referendum as well. But, but that's a request. Is there anything written or drafted that guarantees that? So, the General Assembly can make it effective in all 159 counties when it goes to the statewide referendum? As they do many other ballots that are stuck on the end of a refer, you know, you get all type of state referendum stuck on the ballot, so...
That was simply a local request.
That we have a referendum here that was added as a local request.
That we have a referendum here that was added as a local request, but there's no guarantee that'll be in statewide legislation.
I mean, at some point, I certainly don't have objection to the citizens voting on it, but I'd like to know what we're calling for. I just really don't have much information as far as an actual draft. I guess we won't until they meet in session in January as to what even we're calling for. And that's, you know, that's my concern. I just like the information to know and read and study and understand before I actually call for something, you know, ask our delegation to call for something. I would like to be able to see and read and understand what we're calling for. So that's my concern, sort of, I don't want to go down the path of, you know, Affordable Care Act, just vote on it and then we'll decide what's in it. And, you know, I would like to have a better understanding, if we could, at some point of what we're calling for. Thank you.
All right. We've got Counselor, Mayor Pritchett.
And the only thing Counselor Woodson and I were asking for, that if indeed there is a constitutional amendment, that the citizens be allowed to vote for it or against it, and that we be included. And it is my understanding that the bill that may go up in January may be different from the one they had last time, and it may include Columbus or some other cities. But we just want the opportunity to vote on it one way or the other. It's not asking us to say we support it, support the bill, but what we're asking you to support is the right for the citizens of Muskogee County to have a vote.
All right, we've got next Counselor Garrett.
I approached this from the legislative realities, and I think I brought this up last year. This is probably a reality that's going to happen sooner or later. It's happening in most places. And my understanding too, just to clarify things, is that there has been a lot of background work and that Augusta and Columbus are supposed to be considered in the picture. And I can tell you, there will be, if this is passed, and I think it probably will be on the state level, if it is passed, and we're one of the communities that didn't even support a right to vote, I don't think we're going to be left with a seat at the table. And if we're not left with a seat at the table, as far as discussing, you know, how this legislation occurs and who comes to Georgia, that type of thing, my concern is that, yes, our arts and our entertainment can be impacted because we won't have a say in how non-competes are arranged, that type of thing. And I at least want us to have a seat at the table, and this isn't even saying we're supporting the legislation, it's just saying we want a right to vote, and at least we're known as a community who is open to consideration. And I do want us to have a seat at the table, if nothing else, but I think this is something that is coming, and I think it gives us a better chance of being a community that's considered for the opportunity if we at least support the right to vote on it.
All right, we've got next Counselor Henderson.
Thanks, Mayor. And I, these remarks will, especially with my scratchy throat, will be thankfully brief because I agree with Counselor Garrett. I think that this initiative is underway regardless. And I think in order to even have an opportunity for us to evaluate whether or not it's a good thing or a bad thing for Columbus, Georgia, we have to at least be in the game from the beginning. I actually was a supporter of adding the caveat that we would have a local referendum, and the reason I did that is because it doesn't exist now. And if we don't send any legislation forward stating that we would like that, then we don't even have it on the table. So, yeah, I don't know if it would make the cut in the legislation that's drafted, but I know it won't if we don't voice it on the front end. So this is not making determination on behalf of the community that the casino initiative is a positive thing, but it does give us an opportunity to get, to stay in the discussion so that we will continue to be an option if we determine that that is good for Muskogee County. So I plan to support it. I respect both opinions, I really do, and I see their point of view, but I just think that this is a way for us to continue to be in the conversation.
All right, we have Counselor Woodson.
Yes, thank you, Sarah, so much. I respect my colleague Judy and Baker's opinion very much, but I too agree that we should give the citizens and Columbus an opportunity to have their voices heard in favor or against it. I too would like to have a seat at the table because, as we've seen, our economy needs to grow, our economy needs, and just like Counselor Judy said, what happens if we do have an opportunity? You know, there's, if we don't support it and our names aren't on there, they'll probably think we don't care. And if the opportunity is there to be heard, an opportunity to have development in our community, why not? Why not allow the citizens of Columbus, Georgia to say yes or no? I think the citizens of Columbus, Georgia has taken this community to where it is because they have been given the opportunity to be a part of the process, to say yes or no. And I hope that we can get enough votes tonight to keep this on the legislation, to give our community a voice, a voice at the state level, and possibly an opportunity to vote either in favor or against it. And sometimes when we hear the word casino and gambling, we think of a building just with a lot of slot machines and just playing games, and that's it. We really need to see what it really contains because if it brings a hotel, if it brings other entities, if it gives an opportunity to help local businesses in the area, if it gives an opportunity for job growth, we don't know. And we should be a part of that seat because we want to develop our community and we want to increase our budget. So I hope that our colleagues will at least support it, just to have our voice be heard. And let's see when it comes back, we still got a chance to vote it up or vote it down. This is just a baby step taken.
Okay. And let's see here, we got Counselor Barnes.
You know, all of us sitting up here, we work for the people. The people are the ones that tell us what to do, what they want. So to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I think we need to let the citizens decide what they want. And neither, none of us up here are representing anyone who has not voted us in office. So we're not here to make decisions for the citizens. We are here to represent them and to listen to them. So I just think it's a no-brainer that we just let the citizens decide what they want. I believe it's an excellent opportunity for the community, and I do, I think it's an excellent opportunity for the community, and basically just let the citizens make up their minds.
All right. That concludes discussion. We have, we've got, yeah, I think, do we have a motion and second already? Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, you want to take a count?
All those in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and those opposed is three.
Okay. All right. What else do you have? I'm sorry, I turned you off.
Okay. All right. Item number six is also a carryover from 2017, is a review process and timeline for the issuance of building permits by a local governing authorities.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed?
Item seven is the military retiree state tax exemption, which is a carryover from 2017.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and second for approval. We have Counselor Baker with discussion.
Yeah, just very quick, we've been through this several years now. It's been there for five or six years and ain't gone anywhere. Legislative council, you know, actually ruled against it last year. But just very briefly, Georgia's entire retirement tax code is built on age, not job description. That's what's happening in Ways and Means Committee, so it's, I understand everybody wanting to vote for it, but that's why I'll be not, I won't be supporting it. I don't...
That's good information, I wasn't aware. All right, anything else? Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? Okay. Counselor Davis?
Mayor, I'd like to bring up the new request from, that came in on 17, and also the, I guess we'd call it a continuing request, to go ahead and put those out on the table. There was a, well, and if any other councilman wants to do it now, I think it's appropriate now, that's how we've done it in the past, pretty much. I think it's appropriate to go ahead and put them out on the table and add to it. I think that's my understanding, what the city manager communicated, he's not here tonight, but if that's okay, I'd like to add a few to it.
We do have, we have one more.
Oh, you got one more? I didn't see the one more.
Yes, we'll vote on that one, and then we'll come back to the general discussion of adding some more. What's that one more that's on the...
That last one is the removal of junked motorized vehicles by towing, which is a request of Counselor Barnes, and...
We got a motion, is there a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? Okay, Counselor Davis?
Yes, my apologies, Deputy City Manager, I didn't see that on my sheet here, but thank you. The, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go to the new request from, I guess it's stated as a new request from 2017. Item number two, which Counselor Henderson brought forward, I think that's really, really important for economic development. I think a lot of us didn't realize when we implemented and voted for these tax allocation districts, the restrictions that are being placed on it. So it would take a simple amendment, that's what it is, but it gives the right for the free-market enterprise system to work, but at the same time for no one to take advantage of any type of tax allocation district funding. Which, by the way, is totally...
He's talking about the ethical, about a rewrite...
Number two.
Yeah.
Do you have it, Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where you asked.
The redevelopment powers.
The new request for 2017 legislative session.
Last year's number two.
Yeah. local elected official, any school board member, any employee of the government, and you can stretch it to say any board member of an authority or a committee or a development authority or any like that, anything like that cannot develop or monetarily, the word I'm looking for, gain or a family member in those areas in those tax allocation districts. Mr. City Attorney, you might want to help me on that, I think I said that right.
Are you looking to add this to the...
Put it back on there as an amendment to take to...
Okay, that's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We have Counselor Henderson.
Yeah, this was simply the conflict of interest provision expansion that was asked for last time.
It is, but let me, Madam Mayor, I'd also like to add on there...
I think we've got a motion and second, let's go ahead and vote on that one. I think everybody's good to go. Any other comment on that one? Okay, we have Counselor Woodson.
Hi, Joe. Lynn, I thought this was already on there when we did the tax allocation, because I knew some people that were, that were, like a school board member resigned because of this, because of the development and the relation. So I thought it was already in it, because that's the reason why that individual didn't run for office again.
It's never been changed, they're restricted from developing or doing business in those areas.
Yeah, we're trying to, he's trying to add it in so it's on our agenda.
Yeah, they're trying to lift that.
But I thought it...
She could serve.
Oh, so she could.
Right, it's so broad, as written in the state law, they'd ask for a limitation.
Judy clarified it.
Not an expansion, that was not the right word.
So they can serve. Okay. All right.
So, let's see, we've got that, and then Counselor Garrett, did you want to...
Mine's a new resolution.
Something else? Okay, gotcha. All right, so we've got a motion and a second on this one.
Could you go back over one last thing?
Oh, okay, let's see, Counselor Huff?
No, I just wanted to go back over what we were voting for. I got a little confused and...
This is to add to our legislative agenda, a request that our state legislative delegation review the ethical restrictions to the TAD laws to remove the overly broad conflict provision that's currently there. It was on our agenda last year and just didn't make it, but I think there is some interest certainly. Most people, and we tried to move forward on it, like I said, a year or two ago, it's one of those things where they feel like it's just not enforced, so if nobody's enforcing it, why worry about it? Well, because it's on the books, that's why you worry about it. It could always be enforced at some point. And so I think we've finally gotten some folks' attention, and maybe this year is the year they'll actually move on it, so. I don't know, Clifton, did you have anything else to add?
No, the key part is at the bottom of the page, if you've got the booklet, "The proposed revision would remove the blanket prohibition against voluntary property acquisition in a redevelopment area and provide that any official or employee who has a direct ownership interest in a property that is proposed to receive redevelopment costs shall disclose the interest in writing to the legislative body and not vote or participate in the matter from then on." And that's similar to our charter provisions that say if a counselor has a financial interest in some matter, you have to disclose that in writing, and you cannot participate in discussion or vote. But it just limits the broad prohibition that's in the state law now.
Okay, let's see, Counselor Davis?
And what's, you know, what even makes it more interesting is that it only applies to local elected people, but a state representative or a federal representative can have a free pass to develop and do business in those areas all day, it just don't make any sense.
Okay. All right, I think we've concluded discussion. All those in favor of adding this back into the legislative agenda, please state aye. Any opposed? Okay. And let's see, we had Counselor Garrett was next.
I'd like to add an item on the legislative agenda, supporting Abicam for the support of I-14 through Columbus.
No, aren't you something? Adding I-14 through Columbus.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know that it has to be on legislative agenda, there's no law, it really...
Not here yet.
Yeah.
Maybe next year.
Well, I don't know that it'd have to be in law, it really comes up through the DOT, so it's regulatory, I don't, they could pass a resolution.
Okay, our legislators support it then?
Yeah, I mean, we could request that they pass a resolution supporting it, something like that.
Yeah, just make the request.
So, okay, we're adding to our legislative agenda that our delegations support any efforts to pursue I-14.
Through Columbus.
Through Columbus.
Yes.
Okay, so we had a motion from Counselor Garrett, was there a second? Is there any discussion on this? Counselor Allen, are you to this issue or something else? Okay. All right, all in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? All right. That's even better than a resolution, Frank.
He's even smiling over there.
That's even better than a resolution.
He did a good job.
All right, we're moving along, and we've got Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had for a number of years on our list the Sales Tax Accountability and Transparency Safeguard. I was wondering if that, why that wasn't on here, or is it just needed to be requested?
It can, you know...
You can request it.
I think you can request it.
It's number three last year, I think.
It's just, it's nothing more than an administrative bureaucratic, you know, sort of logjam.
Well, somebody told me that they give this information to Atlanta.
They do give it. They do give it to Atlanta.
But they don't give it to anybody else.
Because it's a population statute. It's ridiculous. So there's no reason to deny it, that, you know, they say, well, confidentiality, well, so taxes aren't confidential in Atlanta.
Well, why couldn't we, through Freedom of Information, request?
Right, I, you know, I would tell you, you know, perhaps, perhaps the motion is to add to legislative agenda to change the population aspect of the, of the bill. They're disfavored, they don't allow them anymore, and that would be the easiest amendment, because the language is already there, and it's just that it's limited to jurisdictions of greater than 400,000 persons. So...
It's only in there deeper. It's number three.
That would be a relatively easy legislative fix.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion that we, that we do what you said.
Okay, is there, in a second?
Yeah, I'll second what you said.
All right, so to remove the population aspect of that statute. Any other, we've got several people lit up, but I think that they want to add things. Any, oh, on that one, okay, Counselor Thomas?
I do think it's important that we keep this on our legislative agenda, even though some of our representatives have said to us it'll never pass.
Right.
But I think that we need to let them continually know, this is important to us, and we want you to do something with it. And I think with the mayor's suggestion of the change in the population number, whatever that needs to be, you know, 165,000, or whatever it needs to be, well, also to get some support. If you put it at a point where Augusta and Savannah and Macon would support it, it might have a better chance of, of passing through the legislature. So, I just think they need to be reminded again that this is important to us.
Okay. Anything else on, on that particular motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving along, we have Counselor Barn, yeah, Counselor Barnes.
Yes, I want to bring forward what we had on the last agenda, legislating imposing restrictions on step therapy fail first protocol.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, there's nine on the previous legislative.
And what is that, Counselor Barnes, it's a...
What's hap, what this is all about is that insurance companies are forcing physicians to prescribe medications for, for patients, which may not be in the best interest of their medical care. And so they're taking the power away from physicians. They're saying, try the medication first, because in the effort, they're trying to force them to take a, a lot of generic medications. And so, what this does, it puts a limit on what those insurance companies can force physicians to do in caring for their patients, basically.
Okay. That's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we have Counselor?
And I have another.
Okay, Counselor Barnes?
I want support for home and community-based services for seniors.
Okay.
How is it, where are you going?
All right, it's on, it's on there. It's the, the item for home and community-based services. Is there a second?
That's number thirteen on the previous agenda legislative.
That's the second. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we go to Counselor Davis. Hi, here we go, Counselor Davis.
I do have a few more, but on the last list, it was number ten, the hotel tax relief for evacuees from storms and hurricanes and other disasters. When an evacuation order is issued, that they would not be charged or taxed in our hotels, or hotels around the state.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Second. What number is that, Counselor Davis?
It's number ten.
Are there any, any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, number eleven is the nonpartisan, I think this is really extremely important, the nonpartisan primary ballots for all local elected officials, including constitutional officers. That was number eleven. If everybody remembers, people were somewhat because partisan, I guess, candidates denied the opportunity to vote for their local elected officials because they moved the voting periods from November into May. And I believe the last voting cycle, many people were denied that opportunity. They had to make a choice. They either voted for local and not their state and federal representatives, or their state and federal and not their local. And that shouldn't happen. That should just not happen. People should have the right to vote on all their local elected officials and their state and federal elected officials. Make a motion and put it back on the list.
Oh, okay. I'd like to add the Peach Care for Kids.
Oh, no, we have a motion in a second.
Oh, I already said.
On number eleven, right?
Sorry, you said Whitson, sorry.
I thought you had a question.
Oh, no.
Are there any questions on that? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
No, I have my light on for this one.
No, Whitson.
Thank you, madam.
You're welcome.
I'd like to add the Peach Care for Children.
That's number?
Eight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on number eight, Peach Care for Children. Peach Care for Kids. Are there any questions?
Kids.
All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? You have any more?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Whitson.
No, I'm good, Frank, now.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, ma'am. I think the, well, Peter Bowden here with the CVB's already left, but we had on there, we talked about the, the competitive disadvantage Columbus has with the destination fee, and that we've asked our representatives to spread that burden out. Right now, it puts us at a, being on a river, it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. That's number five on that list, repeal or modification of the hotel destination fee imposed by House Bill 106. I believe there was some discussion on that, and several representatives were supporting a bill. I still believe that puts Columbus at a competitive disadvantage to the rest of the state when it comes to whether conventions or business in general.
For number whom?
Number five.
Under?
Carryover list from last year. And while we're at it, there's, I just got two more here. The personal transportation vehicles.
On this one, your motion is to keep this on the list.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to keep the repeal or modification of the hotel destination fee on the list. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Number six is dealing with the personal transportation vehicles. I think the deputy city manager touched on that earlier, that we're asking them to do it from a safety perspective, do it on an annual basis, so it can be governed and monitored.
Okay.
Motion.
Are there any questions, comments? Counselor Allen, second. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes?
And the last one, Mayor Protim, I have, is number four. I think Counselor Henderson brought this in the past. Now, deals, still has been on the list for a while, but it deals with a matter of principle. The citizens voted on a lost, and they voted, and they understood the ballot, they understood what they voted on, and we all understood that, and I think we all supported it, only to find out several months later, during the legislative session, that a small section of verbiage was added in some bill at the state level that surprised us all, that it added hotels to be taxed in the loss that was just voted. In other words, it was done after the fact, you know, some people call it taxation without representation, but that's not what the people voted on. It was not, it was changed at the state level, and the citizens didn't have a chance to, to relook at that. Again, that goes back to, we have one of the highest hotel motel taxes in the state of Georgia. Again, it puts us at a competitive disadvantage from a tourism standpoint, and that's just something I think that it was overlooked, and they don't realize the impact in our local community, the, when it comes down to competing for business here in Columbus.
All right, so that's...
Counselor Henderson, I think you put that on the list before, and I don't, I don't want to, I'm sure you're still, you still have the same thoughts about it.
Absolutely.
All right, we've got a motion. I'll take that, Counselor Henderson, as a second. And is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any others? Is that it? Okay, we have Counselor Thomas.
Mayor, you, and the council may recall that during the, several of our discussions about what was going on with the Tax Assessor's Office, I had requested that we have a discussion on the authority of council dealing with the Tax Assessor's Office, and to see if there was something that we wanted to ask our legislators to do. I'm not sure how, the best way to, to go about this is. I know that several of us had some questions and some concerns about what our authority was, and how we can do this, and whether or not we want to put something on the legislative agenda. I guess, Ms. Goodwin, you said, this legislative agenda will be presented to our delegation, is it next week?
Yes, at the Hometown Connection on the 30th.
On the 13th.
On 30th.
30th.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that, you know, at this time of the night, if we want to try to craft something to put on there, but, and it may be that there is nothing that we want to do about it. We, you know, that, that whatever happened with the Tax Assessors happened, and, you know, our, our authority is not, we don't, we don't want to do anything about it. That's why I'm not sure exactly, Mayor, how we ought to go about pursuing this discussion. Maybe somebody else may have a, you know, do we want to talk, do we want to do something about it, and if, if so, do we want to ask the city attorney to draw us up something, or what, you know, what do we need to, what do we need to do? And what is the, not only do we want to do it, but what do we want to do?
Well, it could be passed in concept, certainly. We just did another one similar to this, about the population bill. I mean, you could just propose that our legislative delegation support an effort that returns authority to the local government when dealing with the Tax Assessors.
If we, if we could do something like that to present to them next week, and then between next week and the session, you know, perhaps work with the city attorney, I would think would be the appropriate person to put together what we want. Would that be, would that be what, what you're?
Clifton? Mr. Fay? I can't. Would you take the microphone over to him, please?
I can just use this one.
Sorry. I got one?
I'll just use this one.
Okay.
I mean, we can draw up something that's pretty generic, that asks the legislative delegation to study the structure of Tax Assessors, how they're created, and how they're regulated, and take any appropriate measures to broaden the powers of the local legislative body. We can take a stab at something like that. And then, it's going to have to be a general statewide amendment, whatever they do, if, if they look at it, decide to, because it's the same rules for all 159 counties.
Okay. All right, well, that's a motion then. And is there a second?
Second.
All right, and Counselor Davis would like to speak to the motion.
I think one of the things we talked about, Ms. City Attorney, I think it came up in conversation, a lot of citizens brought it to our attention, what was happening in Atlanta. I believe it was DeKalb County, correct me if I'm wrong, but they were concerned about that, and that their, their local legislative body relied on their, I'm assuming they call it their charter. Their charter that went way back, of course, everybody's saying they didn't have that power, they didn't have that authority. There was some kind of scrimmage that, that went on, and, and I think we had that conversation here at the table as well. But possibly, when you talk about powers, I think that was one of the one things, that was one of the things that we talked about, was the ability for this body within our charter, because I believe you said, you told us, counseled us, that by law, within our charter, we couldn't, we couldn't do it, or whether state law, that's something that needs to be looked at, of having a power, and needs to be studied.
We need to ask them to look at the general state law. You cannot do what Atlanta did pursuant to an 1888 charter provision, which, you know, if challenged, I think is patently unconstitutional, but that, that's not for us to decide. But we don't have that power in our charter anyway, so we need to draft something that asks them to look at the general state law, structure of Tax Assessors, and return any powers that they can return to the local governing body.
All right.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? It is on...
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've, I've got a lot of concern about supporting this, and it's, because it's kind of rushing it forward, because I know that the system was set up, really, frankly, to protect the taxpayers. It did not cede too much authority to one organization with regards to being able to control not only the rate at which we tax those parcels, but the value we place on the parcels, and also the money that is spent from, from, from receiving those taxes. So, I agree, we had a broken system, and maybe that's not the right term. Maybe it was just a system that didn't function as effectively as we would have liked to have seen it function. So, I'm very leery, and I don't, I don't think I can support putting this on there, just because I, I think it, it asks the legislators in Atlanta to give almost too much authority to, to the budgeting organization, the budgeting authority within, within the community. I don't know, I just haven't had an opportunity to really digest it. I just think that it's, if anything, it highlights how important it is when we do replace members of the Tax Assessor's Board and other boards. And it's hard sometimes when you have a neighbor call and say, hey, I want to be on that board. You know, we typically rush to put them on there, and we, we've kind of got a shot across the bow, that it's, it's imperative that we, we vet the individuals, make sure that we're comfortable with their, their philosophy of administering their duties on that board. So, I, I'm not going to support this particular initiative at this time. I think it's just a little, it's kind of a quick, almost a knee-jerk reaction to what we just finished up.
Okay. All right, that concludes discussion on this matter. So, all those in favor of adding the item. Okay, hold on a second.
Did you receive what you, what you were saying, talking?
That the, our legislative delegation support legislation which would return power to local governing authorities over the tax assessment system. governing authorities over the tax assessment system. I mean, there, you know, there are real, it's obviously to the council, there are some real policy reasons why it was done the way it currently is, some to protect council, obviously, to protect councils in all jurisdictions from accusations of political malfeasance. Let's see, we've got Counselor Thomas, Counselor Thomas, and then, if I could only get it to come on, I would recognize Counselor Thomas. Can you...
Perhaps what we, what we ought to do is to say to our delegation next week, this is a concern of council. All of the brouhaha that was going on, it's a concern of council, and we at this time do not have a specific request, but we will work on that, and if we develop one, come back to you by January and present it to you, but we want to give you a heads up that this is a concern of council, and we're going to be working on it and come back to you with it. Would that, Counselor Henderson, would that be a better deal, you think?
I think that would be fine. Any...
Yeah, well, I think if we say to them next week, this, this is another piece you may, you may hear from us, and it may be that, that when we talk about it, and when we look at some language that perhaps the city attorney can put together, we decide we don't want to do that.
Right.
And that's okay, too.
Yes, ma'am, and it gives us other, it gives us time to look at other options, because I know somebody mentioned putting some maximum percentage increase and maximum percentage decrease of the digest, and anything above or below that triggers some type of activity. I, I just think that it's, it's a little, yes, I think that's a good way, and we have until January that we could come up with something like that.
Yeah, you, you can consider something like that with percentages, or you can ask them to form a study committee to look at this statewide, because it's going to be major legislation if they take this up at all, so.
So, Mayor, maybe what my motion is, is that we inform our delegation at the Hometown Connection that this is an issue that council is concerned about, and that we reserve the right to come back to them before the legislation session starts with proposed, with a proposal.
Okay, I don't know that we need a motion. I mean, you can just always bring it up and talk. I mean, do you want to, really want a motion?
I think it could be listed on our agenda, that this was a discussion held in council chambers, so that they'll have it in writing.
Okay, so listed as a discussion. All right, listed as, this is a vote to, list as a discussion item, the matters we've been talking about related to local governing authority powers and the tax assessors roles. So, that's a motion.
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, and any opposed? Okay, and then we have Counselor Davis.
I understand the concerns, just stated by a couple of my council members about the, about, you know, the boundaries of powers, but, you know, there's got to be some structure, and there's got to be some checks and balances, and I think Counsel Allen was about to hit on it, and I think he just briefly touched on it, Counsel Henderson, about the percentages. You know, it's, there's nothing wrong with having a governing body come down and do an audit, but the way this current system's set up, it's just, it's hardly any way that that would ever be. Look, I think that was one of the concerns with the number of pills, the number of pills blew the number away, but then you have the percentage on the tax digest wasn't even close, and, you know, there's nothing wrong with asking somebody to come down, when you get in a situation like we did, and come down and take a look at it. Well, they're not even going to do that or entertain it because of the way the current structure is. So, having a structure in place where there's better checks and balances, I think benefits everybody, that's another way to look at it.
Okay, all right, Counselor, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney.
We didn't hit the button.
They're just popping on and off, you wouldn't believe it over here. Okay, so, are we done? Is that it? Okay, we've completed our legislative agenda at this time, then, and, Ms. Deputy City Attorney, or City Manager, does that conclude your agenda?
That concludes my agenda.
Okay, great, and let's see, we've got Counselor Huff.
Yes, Deputy City Manager, Madam Mayor, had a question. We had a meeting over at the enrichment services building on the project coming up, 185, coming up in the 2020 projects, and the question was, the owner of the new towing service is a real nice guy, he came to the meeting, and he talked, but we were trying to figure out, the neighborhood is complaining, trying to figure out why did the city move a towing service into the area when we are trying to revitalize the area going forward, because that whole little area there, that property had been vacant, I guess, for years, probably 20, 30-plus years, and when they put the exit in there, the trailer park and some other items out there will be cleaning up the whole area, but now we have a lot of old cars and towing services right there in the background, on the side, be right on the side of the highway. So, if you could check into that and let me know what's going on. I spoke with him, they had five different options at the meeting, and I think the couple of options that weighed out by the public would not affect him, but the people are just concerned that when you clean up the whole area, that, that'll be left behind, because I think he said that he had to move due to the city getting, buying property or something where, at his last location. So, my question was, you know, why did the city pick our spot to move him to?
We'll certainly look into that, I'm sure it had a lot to do with zoning, but we will definitely, we'll find out, let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, we'll turn it over, then, to the Corku Council. Ms. Washington.
Madam Mayor, members of council, have a few items of information. There are several memorandums from me advising of upcoming board vacancies on our airport commission, board of health, board of tax assessors, cooperative extension advisory board, personal review board, recreation advisory board, as well as the medical center hospital authority, have two biographical sketches, one of Mr. Ralph King, which is Counselor Allen's nominee for Mr. Frank Etheridge's seat on the planning advisory commission, as well as Ms. Melinda Tolbert, the land bank authorities nominee to succeed Brett Dobbs. I have a resolution asking that we change the meeting schedule for the month of December. We want to incorporate a regular meeting with our proclamation session that will be on December the 5th at 5:30 PM, and a regular session on December the 12th at 9:30, and to cancel the December 26th meeting.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Have two resolutions to excuse counselors Davis and Barnes.
We've got a motion and second on items 11 and 12. All those in favor, please state aye.
And then we have correspondents from the secretary of the circle commission asking that these seats be declared vacant, these members are not attending the meetings, Ms. Sarah Ann Arcella, Mr. Danny...
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye.
I have an add-on, we received taxicab business owners' application for Catcha Cab taxi service, police department has recommended approval.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got a motion and second that the minutes of the historical and architectural review board, board of tax assessors, multiple minutes of the crime prevention board, and the pension fund employees' board of trustees be received. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay.
On our board appointments, on our animal control advisory board, we're still working, they're having some difficulty getting someone to replace Dr. Scott McDermott. Building authority, we still need someone to replace Mr. Kel Jackson, who has resigned. On our civic center advisory board, Mr. Bruce Samuels has resigned. This is District One appointment, Counselor...
Okay.
And then on our, the comprehensive plan stakeholders meeting, if any of the counselors want to make a nomination today, and then on our hospital authority, excuse me, Mr. James Webster.
I need you to come first.
No, we have to send these to the authority, and they will select, and we actually need three for each of these. And on a... Okay. Then on our Keep, on our Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we're still working to get a replacement for Ms. Brenda Polaski for District Two. On the land bank authority...
Okay, we've got a motion and second for confirmation, Melinda Tolbert and the land bank authority, all those in favor, please state aye.
And then on the planning advisory, Counselor Allen is officially, we'll bring this back for confirmation.
Is it a good move to send a resolution to the project for this serving?
That'll come automatically. And then on the public safety advisory, Mr. House is eligible, Counselor Allen, you want to re-nominate?
Bill Ward.
Bill Ward, okay. Mr. Ward can be confirmed.
Got a motion and second, all those in favor, please state aye.
And Mayor, Ms. Janice Granville, this is your appointment, she's not eligible to succeed herself.
Okay.
Recreation advisory, we're still working to get a replacement for Mr. Gary L. Bruce. I'm sorry? Okay. And then the youth advisory, Counselor Davis, we also need a nomination from you on that. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, yes.
Madam Ford, I have a nominee of District Two and comprehensive plan stakeholders.
Okay. Get the Jim Cole paper, okay? He can go ahead and be confirmed.
Okay. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay, and we have Counselor Baker.
City Attorney, did they make any headway on that New Year's Eve issue?
Mike Baker, please use it. Okay, it's up.
That Lucy was working on, if you could ask her, and a lot of the, New Year's Eve's on a Sunday was causing some problems with state law about who could open and when, and they were trying to get that resolved.
Before the end of the year, it sets that one date, New Year's Eve, as the day that places can stay open pursuant to the state law, you can designate one day a year.
One day, right, one Sunday a year.
Right, we'll bring that back.
Okay.
We'll have to bring it back in December, you know, before December.
Right, yeah, well, there were some people that were trying to book venues and caterers and vans, and they're, they don't know what to do unless they can, you know...
Right.
Yeah, we need to do it sooner rather than later, they need to, you know, contracts extinct and things like that. So, if you would just...
Yeah, I mean, if we can get it together, we'll bring it next week.
Well, just soon as you can, thank you.
Okay. All right, Counselor Henderson.
And I just, also for City Attorney, just an update, we talked, I think, last time about the Airbnb, we were going to look at what other areas are doing to try to make sure that, just make sure that all the same taxes are being collected on all hospitality venues. Where are we on that?
Hotel motel people have been discussing it, I understand there's pending state legislation as well.
Hotel motel people, which hotel motel?
Yeah, I don't know.
Convention and visitors bureau has been discussing it, I know there was...
Pam, Pam can comment, and there's also state legislation pending.
We have convened a group with the CCBB, planning, inspection codes, fire department, occupation tax and finance, and we've been kind of looking at other jurisdictions and what they do to regulate Airbnb. There's also some state legislation that's kind of circulating about eliminating some of the authority that the local governments have, so we're really still researching and trying to put together something that we can make a recommendation on. There's quite a few things that will be difficult for us to regulate. We've had a conference call with Airbnb, and they are willing to remit hotel motel and sales tax on behalf of their clients. They will not release a list to us as to where all the locations are, so the CCBB has tried to maintain a list based off of pictures that they're able to find on the different websites, Airbnb and some others, so we are working through the process and hope to have something back to council as a recommendation on how to move forward.
Okay.
Taxation by volunteerism?
It's a nifty concept.
Yeah, right, self-governance, sort of, okay.
Well, just, that would, if you could kind of keep us posted on it, because, I mean, I requested this several months ago, and haven't heard anything on it, and I'm hearing from people in the community, and even the folks that are operating some of the Airbnbs are okay with it, they're, they're fine with remitting any kind of fees or taxes to try to make sure that the playing field is level, they just need some kind of guidance, and then I've even heard that we've got some legislation in place that we could apply now that would, would satisfy most of the key issues. I just don't know, I haven't heard anything.
And we, and we can come back with an update, where we're at, things that we're looking at, but at this point, we're hesitant to give a recommendation, because we feel there's still some missing pieces as far as being able to regulate residences and their zoning issues, where they're allowed, where they're not allowed, and so we've really, as we're looking at other jurisdictions, we have still some questions.
Why don't you come back at the work session and just tell them what you've done? I mean, I know, I mean, for instance, there's been a pretty extensive effort to try and find them, and we've done some pretty good sleuth work, you know, taking pictures and driving down roads until we find that house, and...
Yeah, you know, and I, I would think it would be, I mean, it's somewhat of a safety issue for, for residents, you know, just because of the way these things are proliferating, and I, I think it's an awesome idea, I think it's a great way to, and in our environment, what I'm hearing is that Fort Benning and families of the soldiers that are in training are really grateful for the opportunity for these types of, types of facilities, but it just, it seems like there's got to be, got to be some consistency. So, okay, yeah, thanks.
We'll come back at the work session soon.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our business agenda, but we do have a request by the city attorney to go into executive session on matters of litigation and property acquisition disposition. We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, great, thank you, clear, clear the chambers, please. All right, we have just exited an executive session on matters of litigation and property acquisition disposition. No votes were taken, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We've got a motion and second, all those in favor, please state aye. Great, we are adjourned, and we'll see you next Tuesday for a work session.